March 12th, special board meeting. What we're going to do tonight, so you understand, we had to have a special meeting. There were some issues on, our budget issues if you will, and there was a lot of different opinions, a lot of different talk on it, and we decided to have a special board meeting. And this way, we can get these five items knocked out, and we did not want to slow down any presentation that Teresa had the other night. We would have been there all night, so I think we can handle these better when we just talk about them, and you'll understand where we're going with this. Let's start out with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. I also wanted to say, what we're going to do is, on these action items, we had so many different opinions, that we are going to make, I wouldn't call it an impromptu action item, but what it's going to be is a way to get it on, so we can vote on it, and that way, we'll see if it works. We could not put an action item that had everybody's opinion, and that's why we're going to do it tonight, this way, and we'll see, we'll see what we got. Next thing, is there any additions or deletions to this agenda? Any from the board? Nothing? Okay, with that, can I get a motion to approve as presented?
No move.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carried. Anybody from the audience want to say anything? We have public comment for three minutes. Nobody want to come up? Oh, gentleman's coming in. Robert, do you want to come up at all? Just to give you a chance. All right, very good.
I have one, Joe.
Oh, go ahead. Yes, do it first.
Catherine Bradley, Bellevue. I fully support the market increase of the GIPD command staff. It is essential to compensate these key individuals. This, in my opinion, will recognize the critical role they play in ensuring the smooth operation and success of the department. Fair compensation fosters motivation and loyalty to the township of Groseal. This is strategic move that will yield a positive outcome in the long run, enhance the department's competitive edge in the market, when all downriver communities are struggling to retain staffing. It is a positive step towards ensuring that our command staff feels appreciated and motivated to continue driving our team towards success. Seeing as many members of the board ran on sentiments supporting public safety, I would hope such members would vote yes to fair market conditions for the Groseal Police Department command staff. One cannot only support the police department when it is easy. When you campaign on high priority public safety, that includes proper pay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll start with the action items. Action item number one, I'm going to read these, and we will go through each one separately. To approve the non-union wage adjustment budget inclusion at 2.5%. Second?
Back in.
Oh, one of them, Brian, you got it? Okay, what we did was, when we're doing the budget hearings, Teresa came up with numbers, everything from percentages, what we had, what we could do, and to keep a balanced budget, and the bottom line is what they came up with, especially with the inflation, I forget what inflation was this year, but we thought it was absolutely fair and equitable to everyone that's non-union. I believe the union for police was 3%. I'm sorry, I don't know TPOM.
Two and a half.
Okay, at two and a half. So I believe that it's fair. I think what's happened in the past is, in the union, I get it, they negotiate, and I was a union president one time, obviously, I negotiated both sides of the table for three or four different contract negotiations. So the bottom line is, you have to keep the spread between union and management, it's only fair. I think a fair and equitable raise this year is 2.5%. And once again, Teresa, thank you for all the work on that, and that's what we came up with. Any questions, concerns, anything from the board you have on this item?
Joe, I think I missed it. Did you say it was 3% for the police non-union and 2.5% for the rest of the non-union?
Not police non-union. No, no, it's the union contract for police this year is 3%.
Yeah, I got you, all right.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Anybody down there? Bill, Nikki, you good?
Joe, I am a little bit ill at ease about this concept of raises at the moment.
Okay.
I didn't pull it out of a hat or anything at the last minute, but in this particular time, since we have had our positions here as trustees, we have confronted an issue where we have made a commitment to almost $60 million on a bridge, and that's an unknown to us to a certain degree. We had a presentation last night, I was very happy to see it, I'm happy to think that we can deal with water pipes, finally, but we're talking, as I understand it, 30 million that we have to come up with for that, if it was all priced at today's prices over a 25-year period of time. And so I see this big set of letters in front of me that say unknown, and taking on a wage increase, when I'm not sure we can afford this, leaves me a bit uneasy. It's not something I'm comfortable with. I wanted to give the police a raise. I can sit here and I might end up crying like I sometimes do, because on both instances with fire and police, I've had officers come and assist us, and I am grateful beyond words for that. But I'm sitting here now with a sense of responsibility to the overall welfare of everybody here as taxpayers, and I'm not comfortable with what I know about all of this, to feel at ease with committing to a wage increase at this time. It's not that I'm ungrateful.
Bill, I apologize for, are you talking about the police?
I'm talking about the general concept of raising salaries at this point.
Or the non-union folks?
I have not in my mind separated non-union from union at this point. I can't get away from the union, that's the law.
Right.
And I'm not trying to stick it to these other people because they're not with the law.
I understand, thank you.
I'm trying to deal with being a responsible trustee.
Okay.
All right.
Well, thank you, Bill. Kevin, you got, was answered what you needed, or was there, did you have a comment?
I just want to be clear that we're talking about the non-union.
Correct.
Employees.
Yeah, that would be like the managers and some of the non-union individuals, that they have certain positions within the township, correct?
Okay, and my understanding, and I'll ask our finance director, Teresa McLaughlin, my understanding is, there are about 14 or 15 people who are non-union, and they have not received any pay hike this year, as far as matching the other, the union employees and the police union employees.
That's correct. There's 14 full-time, non-union positions in the township, and for this year, there's been no market adjustments, just the cost, 2.5% cost of living adjustment that's, was in the budget that was presented.
So this is a cost of living adjustment for them?
Correct.
And this is something that is already in the budget, or has already been budgeted?
That's correct. It is currently in the budget that was presented Monday evening.
Okay, and?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm agreeing with you.
Thank you.
I wasn't.
Thank you for that.
I appreciate the explanation. Yeah, no, I was agreeing.
Thank you.
That's what, that's question I was going to make sure everybody just knew.
Thank you.
Jameson, you said you had?
Yeah, just one question. So it looks like the fire chief and the fire marshal both have a full-time and part-time pay, so this 2.5% would only affect their full-time base pay, correct?
Isn't that?
That's correct.
Okay.
Teresa, what is the small amount for again? Is that healthcare, or?
I'm sorry?
Like, one will say their salary, and then below it, it says 6,467. Refresh my memory, was that?
Oh, for the fire?
Yeah, was that healthcare?
Fire marshal.
So all the volunteer firefighters get a stipend every year? It is recalculated every calendar year, based on the health insurance premiums for that year, and the deductibles for that year. So the fire chief and the fire marshal, in addition to their base salary, they also get that stipend.
But it's to pay towards healthcare expenses?
What it effectively does is it goes into their HSA, and if there's an amount that the employees have to pay, that's over the hard cap. If there's an employee contribution that's required, that comes out of that as well.
Don't we do HSAs for some of the other salaried non-union?
Where required to do, have, anyone who is enrolled in a high deductible health plan is eligible for a health savings account.
Okay.
So that is, that is every?
Okay, we do.
Go ahead.
So that, currently for this year, almost every employee and retiree is in a high, one of the high deductible health plans, so they do have health savings account, and if they, and this is for anyone that's under age 65, as far as retirees, and so the township has stipulated in the union contracts and the non-union, everyone follows this, is that with the health savings account, the township makes it up to a maximum of $2,000 contribution into their health savings account, and, but in order to get the $2,000, we have a wellness program set up, so that they, there are eight opportunities, and they have, each opportunity is valued at $500, and to get the full 2,000, you would need to complete four out of those eight opportunities.
And the 2,000 isn't reflected in these numbers that we were given, right, of the wages?
No, the numbers that you were given are just their wages.
Okay.
But the $2,000 is included for the employer contribution, is included in the budget as an expense.
Right, but looking at this, it's kind of apples to oranges, because we put the stipend down for fire.
We're just looking at the wages sheet.
Yeah.
Just the wages side.
Right.
Just look at the wages side, that has to be put there, because that is something they get.
Yes, to answer your question, the 2.5% isn't on the $6,700 or whatever. And then, so, I understand there's probably different retirement, or maybe there isn't, right? Retirement programs for township employees. I do 30 years as, I don't know, the water clerk, and I receive, what, 50% of my pay for the rest of my life?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, any, any raise we give today of 2.5% is effectively 1.25% for the next, however many years, right? So that's?
It depends, so we have different employees on different pension tiers. So there were contracts that went out, and the managerial handbook that went out to the board last week, and in that, you will notice that there are two, basically two-tiered retirement plans. So you have employees that were basically before, I believe 2012, that, around that area, that are on like a 2.5% multiplier, anybody after that is like on a 1.5% multiplier. Also, the contribution for the township is capped at 10%. So in addition to that, anybody after 2012, if the township has to contribute any more than 10% of their salary to their pension, the employee has to contribute. So I just want to emphasize that it's not as simple as that, it depends really upon the longevity that the employee has and what their hire date was.
Okay.
Set them out like that. It's not in a ratio, correct? It's not a ratio.
The DB plan is frozen though, right?
Well, the DB plan has changed to be frozen at a contribution limit by the township.
Could a employee, so if you have 2.5%, which is the same as like the DOD, right? But at 20 years, they adjust it, so you're not getting 2.5% anymore, because then you could theoretically get to 100%. Is there any?
We have a cap, you can't get to 100% here. And different plans is different amounts.
Okay.
So what it is, the equation basically is your average salary over a period of time, multiplied by years of service, and then you take whatever your multiplier is, like 1.5%. So let's just say you made $100,000, and you're here for 30 years, whatever that is, $3 billion, you multiply that by your multiplier, which is, in the case of a newer employer, is 1.5%, that's your annual pension.
An example, and again, I hate to throw myself in as examples, but it's easier.
Like $45,000?
Six years prior to my retirement, I couldn't get any more retirement. I stayed because I, I mean, it's true, I love what I did, but I wasn't going to make any more money in that. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
But I would get my raises if I got any, but there is no more, I mean, you hit a limit at a certain point, and that's why some people take off at that limit. I mean, no offense to, if they want to leave, lovely.
What's the financially prudent thing to do?
Yeah, so, right, I must not have been financially prudent.
So it's the years of service and the pay cap that get frozen after a certain period of time? Do both get frozen?
On some of the pensions, there's, as Joe had mentioned, a cap on the compensation amount, so your pension can't exceed 80% or whatever your salary was.
Plus, there's always that where you sign over, it goes lower, so it's hardly ever at that amount, because people, you sign over to your spouse, most do, and then it knocks it down even more, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, the cost of survivorship coverage.
Yeah, so, anyway, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I mean, that makes sense to me. Do the, so these, this raise, because again, I'm more familiar with the federal system than our system, so anytime there's a raise with the federal system, that also has a COLA adjustment for retirees, is that rolled into our system as well, or do we adjust their retirement pay separately?
So, under the police, the most recent police contract, COLA was limited, I believe, to 1%, and I believe it's eventually phased out. For all the other employees, COLA is no longer available.
Okay, all right. All right, that answers all my questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the board?
Just, you also don't give post-retirement increases, right? Because you can have COLA as an active employee, and you can have like a built-in increase when you're a retiree.
Right.
So we don't have either.
And that was referring to the post-retirement, or not post-retirement, post-employment, when you're in retirement. COLA was basically phased, is phased out.
Okay.
For the majority of the employees, and then there's a reduced amount for the police department, which I believe eventually phases out as well, so.
Okay.
Joe?
Yes, sir, Bill?
I'd like to ask Derek one question.
Sure, that's why we're here.
This presentation we had last night from Fishback, spread this out over 25 years. I mean, that was sort of the idea of it, as I saw it, understood it. During the time this was being put together, have you had any chance to talk with anyone or think of a way through how the township can step up to meeting these financial obligations over the next 25 years?
I think that was, that was brought up in the Wednesday meeting, or Teresa went over that.
We were thinking it actually would be a good idea to have a special meeting on just the pension, retiree healthcare costs, and then we can discuss.
I mean, we can do that, but that's what, yeah, Teresa went over.
You're referring though to the DPS meeting last night for the water system?
Right, now, the way I, what I'm talking about isn't related exactly to a pension.
I thought you meant?
What it's related to, in layman's language, is a pocketbook. We've got a pocketbook, and we've got to take care of obligations. If we give people here a raise, that money isn't available to pay for the water pipes, or it isn't available if we need it for the bridge. That's where my head is at.
Well, it's a totally separate fund, if I'm wrong.
That isn't the point, Joe.
No, I'm not going against you, Bill, I'm saying it's a separate fund where money can't be commingled.
I'm not trying to commingle the money.
Correct.
What is commingled is the fact that we have taxpayers, and they only have so much money they can afford to pay.
Okay.
Now, if you look at it that way, if the person has a dollar to pay, and he gives 75 cents to one of these things, and there's three others that need attention, all they've got left for, according to what they can afford, is 25 cents. Now, I know that's commingling funds maybe in some of your minds, but what I'm saying is, we've got taxpayers that can only afford so much, and that's going to, unless we have a magic wand and come up with grants, I'm just wanting to know, where does the money come to pay for all this on a long-term basis?
Yeah, and then that's our job to figure that out, right? But I do think it's a bit of a balance that we have to be aware of, right?
I guess when you're saying that, I'm saying, until I have an idea of how I'm going to do it, I don't want to commit to something.
Right, understandable. I would say though, that, you know, in the case of the DPS department, you know, you have personnel costs, you have capital costs, you have operational costs, and they all kind of work together in a budget. And I think it's important to, you know, maintain quality employment, you know, with quality employees, by at least keeping up with the rate of inflation, because if you don't maintain good employees, if you don't have attractive employment, you know, those costs end up coming to roost eventually, either through inefficiencies or mistakes that end up costing that department, you know, more in the long run. So, you know, all those things have to be balanced with one another, right? You can't just simply say, we have these obligations on capital, so we're going to sacrifice, you know, paying a fair wage with the employees. And I'm not saying that what we're talking about tonight is either fair or not fair, or the decisions being made tonight are going to result in unfairness in wages, but it all has to be balanced in the management of the department, so, all those costs.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, so the mention of the pension, and I'm going to what Supervisor Porcello said, aren't we on track with the pension? That's what you explained, right, Teresa? That you're showing we have a glide path, and we're following that, and we're on track with that, is that correct?
We have a plan with MERS.
Right.
And we are on track with that plan currently, to be fully funded by 2039, 2040.
Right.
But annually, the payments are going to continue to increase for a period of time before they level out, and it will reach $3 million, so as those years are coming up, we need to look at where we're at with everything else, and how that's going to fit into our budget. So we went from 1.875 million contribute, minimum contribution for this current fiscal year, to just over $2 million.
Okay.
That's partly where my concern is, right there. We commit to some more here, but we know that these things are going higher, how do we know we have enough later on?
And we have a glide path, but we are at the lowest you can get for pension funding. I mean, at 60, 61%, it's huge. I mean?
Teresa, can you speak to what the assumption is that MERS makes with regards to salaries year over year?
So every year with our actuary, I have to provide current salary information. They track the salary information, they track the number of active employees, they track the number of retirees who are pension-eligible, and they do an actuarial projection every year, and it's a rolling projection, so right now, they've taken into consideration, and this was from last summer, so it's coming up again, the years of payroll through December 31st of '23. Then this summer, they'll ask me for the payroll for December of '24, and they'll do the determination based on for the next fiscal year, for April 1st of 2026. So it's looking at the census, and it looks at, you know, the age of everybody. We do have a growing population when, for our MERS plan. We do have, we actually have more, slightly more retirees than we do active participants in the MERS plan. But the township has already started taking action towards that, in reducing the factor for the retirement benefit, that was done a few years ago. Some of the changes that the township have made will take a while for them to see the effect, but they also make an assumption about the rate of return every year, and that's why those graphs had three lines, because they made an assumption, and they showed what those lines would look like with a reduction of 1% from that, and another reduction of 2%. Fortunately, for the December 2024 year, the rate of return was higher than what they assumed. So then they will relook at that for the next actuarial report that comes out in the summer of this year.
When they project out, do they have a percentage that they use for wage adjustments? And what I'm trying to get to is, my, my understanding was, they generally assume a 3% or greater wage adjustment per year in their actuarial evaluation. So in theory, if your actual, if your actual adjustment was less than 3%, you're actually less than what the liability would be based upon their assumptions?
So every year, they do, well, I have one year to go by, but at this point, but they do ask for the current union contracts, and the current cost of living adjustments for the non-union individuals as well. They ask for the number of individuals in each bargaining unit, and the number of non-union full-time employees as well.
Okay, thank you, Teresa. Okay, if we're all set, I'd like to vote on this now, for action item number one, non-union wage adjustment at 2.5%. Brian, do you need it individually? No? Okay. All in favor for this, say aye.
Aye.
Everybody that's opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Want to oppose? All right, motion passed. Brian, I have a question on number two. Because it was in the budget, do I include in the verbiage budget inclusion, or leave that out? Because it's in the budget. Just when we start talking about?
Yeah, you can leave the inclusion part out, just like you did the last one.
Action item number two, downtown development authority manager wage adjustment to $10,000, putting him at, from 75 to $85,000.
Joe, can I?
Second.
Sorry.
That's all right, second? Yes. Now, what I'll do is, yeah, no, I'm more than happy to let somebody else talk first, go ahead. We can, we can discuss it now.
Okay. The only thing when I see that is I'm concerned, because I looked at all the salaries, and I put them in order, and what everybody makes, and we have an outlier that's paid low, and I have a concern increasing that gap between a lower-paid and then the next one up. Regardless of what we do today, at least next year, I'll be really pushing for that outlier to get brought up, so that, at least within the range of the others.
Okay.
Completely agree on that. I've done the same thing, and I've.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, I missed the first part.
I totally agree with Michelle. I looked at the same things, and I see exactly, I assume she's. she's going at the same thing I'm looking at. And I, I think that we have some gaps in how we, um, I think we can do things better and I've started to work on something. I talked to Derek about it and I, I think, um, we can simplify our lives too with, um, perhaps developing a, a pay scale or something that shows where everybody's at and lets them know kind of where they can transition to depending on the situation for them. I just think it'll make it easier for all of us to, instead of asking all these questions.
Yeah. Understood. Um, if I may comment on what Margaret and Mickey are saying and then we'll, you guys can jump in on your opinion on this section, but just a comment, just to be cognizant of this. Um, what happens when, um, the township has brought two jobs together, three jobs together? I, I get that. When you downsize, uh, the gentleman on my right here has two jobs he's doing. He took the part-time and the full-time job. They created one. We have a gentleman here who's the township manager and DPS director. And then you have one more individual that does that. Who is Ross? And I, and this is just facts. This isn't, I'm not going one way or the other. But Ross took on, uh, two department head jobs if you want to count. DDA was one. It was part-time. Uh, but we did have a separate person for that and now under the umbrella, um, of the, um, community development would be building, it would, uh, building department, it'd be zoning and it would be planning. So this is a symptom of it. This is what happens when you have individuals, uh, and, and the police and fire have notorious been the highest paid in every city across the country. And when you do combine jobs together and you expect them to do more work, more job units, more work units within that job rather, this will create that spread too, Mickey. That's just a, just an observation. So I have no problem talking about if we have one that's low here, I have no problem bringing that to the table next, next budget year. Um, I think that, uh, that's fair. There, that is equitable for all. But I think we still got to be cognizant of the group. And when you combine jobs together, this is what happens. It creates a larger spread and you still have to take care of those people because you expect them to handle two areas of the township, just as I stated with Derek, Ross and Brian over here. And I don't mean to embarrass either of you guys, but they combined jobs a few years back, gave them a bump in pay, but now it created a bigger spread. I mean, we just need to be cognizant of that. That's all.
I saw the person working firsthand though and was really impressed with their work ethic. And the only reason I say I would deal with it next year is I don't know at this point if I could even introduce, like instead of a 2.5 to do a four or a 5%. I just didn't know at this point in the process whether I can introduce that.
I have no problem speaking next budget year about anybody that may not have been included here or was discluded, they feel, or that's why we're here.
No, Joe, I mean now though. I mean this year. I mean.
Well, we need to start speaking this year for, you know, and you're talking about.
It's at this point in the process, am I allowed to introduce a request for a raise for somebody that I think is an outlier? Or do I have to wait to next year?
You can do whatever you want anytime. I'm just saying when we're done here, then we can go towards those other issues and we can talk about them at any time. You can bring them up.
We can't vote on it tonight?
Well, I don't, I guess we can. I'm, I'm not prepared to vote yes for anything tonight due to what I saw. The budget's been balanced.
Okay.
The borrowing of the money to keep the police department out of the red.
Right.
I'm not, I don't want to add anything else to the, uh, to the mix, if you will. I'm, that's just me. That's.
Joe, go ahead.
That's only me.
Who's next?
I'd like to ask another question on this. Joe, this is Joe, I'm talking about to all of us. I'm not saying that we would turn this down year after year after year. I'd say let's just make sure we know that when we're doing these kinds of things, we know what the consequences of our actions are for the future. And right now we've had an awful lot of information telling us we got some challenges in front of us. I guess I, I just needed to add it that this, because of this conversation, that we might explain, hey, we know this isn't something we would prefer to do.
Could I at least?
But if we took the, the coming year and used it to really think through how we can do this and come back then, it would be something we'd be more comfortable with.
I'd like to at least introduce 5% because it's such a small merit, but it'll.
You mean five? I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you. 5,000 or 5%?
5%. And it's, I think, less than five grand, Joe. It's like.
That is less than five.
Right. It's a small amount, but it starts to close.
And not the 2.5.
In lieu of the 2.5.
In lieu of. Okay.
Yeah, because it just starts to close.
No, he's talking, she's talking about.
Outlier because it starts to close that gap.
Talking about Ross.
Because it's a big gap.
I could offer a friendly amendment. So the current.
That's fine.
Motion is that we give the, the downtown development director and, let's see, where's he at on here? All right. DDA, I'm going to use this term. DDA and community development director a $10,000 raise. Um, I, I think Ross has some more certificates now. He's put in a lot of hard work. He's covering down on three commissions. So he does potentially deserve a raise, but I'm just going to, I'm just going to say the individual everyone's talking about. We're talking about Janelle, right? That's the.
Correct.
Person who's.
Yes.
Was hired at a lower amount, right? Um, so what I would, I, I guess, and I know Ross wouldn't love this, but I don't think Ross is, it doesn't sound like Ross is going to get a $10,000 raise tonight. So maybe Ross gets a $5,000 raise and Janelle gets a $5,000 raise. And we could amend this action item to include her in this action item.
Okay.
I'd like to make a.
Kevin, you go ahead. Oh, no.
Go ahead, Kevin. No, whatever. We, pay raises, we do not have a formal, the township does not have a formal, uh, in some instances, uh, ra, uh, salary range, uh, administration. And, and it's been an ad hoc, uh, ad hoc decision or, and the person asking for the rage, raise has to come and make a, make a presentation on why they deserve the raise. Um, the, what I'm suggesting is that the township put together a salary administration program that looks at other communities in the Down River area, uh, of similar size, of similar income, so that we are a bedroom community. We don't have a lot of, um, income besides, uh, uh, homeowners tax, being taxed. Uh, so there, there are limits that other communities may not have, other larger communities or other communities with industry and, uh, commercial. We don't have that at this point. Um, I think in a salary administration plan could look at all of these details and see where, compare, you know, apples to apples, oranges to oranges, so that if somebody comes for a raise, uh, and we're just looking at salaries from the Down and River area, we need to take into consideration what the benefits are. Uh, I know that the, the unions do that. Uh, and I, I would like to do that for other, uh, management personnel who are not unionized so that what the, the raises that are given out, there's a, uh, a progression. You know that when you start, you know, there are different levels that you're able to increase to and, you know, and, and sometimes there will be limits on what the person can, can handle. Um, I've talked with the finance director about this a little bit and I think that it would be helpful to look at this further. I would go on to say that, uh, it, it would include, for instance, Ross has been here, I believe about two and a half years. So, and I believe Ross received a pay bump last year. And if he receives a pay bump, not, again, not, whether the person deserves it or not is another question. Uh, and the question is can we afford it in the, the, you know, the larger budgeting? Um, I, I think those things have to be considered, uh, when, when we look at all of this. Um, and I think that's, that's a fair way to do this.
Yeah. I think that's a good idea, Kevin.
Yeah.
I think it's needed.
And, and look at it.
You know, I, I want to comment on that. Um, Derek and I at least started a plan where when we have non-union, this is kind of going off task while we're here right now, but real quick, they used to just, the township board would say what, what they would make after a person was hired or going to be hired. And at least what Derek and I in this one program that we had, we need to go one step further, Derek, um, and made a range of, of the positions. We made a range, but what you're saying is also correct where we need to go outside. So let's go to Mark right now on this one so we can figure out what we're putting in this action item.
So I a hundred percent agree with Kevin. The non-union have to have step raises, just like, I'm going to use the police contract because I'm familiar with that. Starting officer gets A, then you go to B, then you go to C. That has to be done for all of our non-union employees as well. Teresa, the 2.5% was budgeted for everybody, correct? You said that earlier. I just want to make sure I'm clear on that.
That's correct.
Okay. So anything tonight above and beyond what we already talked about is going to put us possibly over budget. Is that correct?
So in the, in this case for the position of DDA director slash community development director.
Mm-hmm.
He followed, he did everything correctly as far as the process. This has been a consideration that he has wanted, wanted to put in the budget initially. So, and he came to me and we looked over everything to make sure he still had balanced budgets with that increase in those two departments. So one of the departments is the DDA, which is a separate fund. The other department is a department of the general fund.
Okay.
So right now, with the current budget, the total, which is inclusive of a 2.5, it's not in addition to the 2.5, that is, is in both budgets.
Okay.
But we have some reserves, right?
Hold on. Can I finish please? Please. So with that said, there was a little bit of room in that budget, in the DDA. However, so, so my, my point is this, my contention is this. I have no problem with giving everybody the, the cost of living, the 2.5 for now to get us through this year. I, I, I think we're running into a bigger problem if we go above and beyond that tonight. I will be voting, just so everybody knows, no on number two, three and four, only because I'd like to see a plan put together for each department that includes a raise for them on a step payment program. Okay? Because I don't want to get us into a position where we'll start slipping backwards. Like I don't want to shoot from the hip to give everybody raises. Ms. Mcnee, for instance, her job is, she's way underpaid for what she does comparatively to other airports. Start off at a hundred grand, 120. So there needs to be an adjustment made there too. But I think this year, right now, where we're at, in my opinion, this is going to be a bad idea to give more, to go above and beyond the 2.5%. I hate saying that. I support the police. We had a comment earlier and I appreciate the comments that come in. It's not that I don't support the police. I ran on public safety as well. I also ran on fiscal responsibility and we need to take this into consideration. Next year, if each department does their plan properly, we can apply or we can plan for these raises and figure out where the money's going to come from instead of just shooting from the hip and hoping things work out in the next budget year. So going back to what I said earlier, Ross is going to be the only one that has his incorporated, correct?
At this point, correct.
Okay. Unfortunately, I still think at this point, we need to have step pay raises for non-union that includes everybody, from Derek's job all the way down. I'm talking about everybody. And it needs to be incorporated in the budget. So we can say year one, year two, year three, year four, then we revisit it. Because if every department does a plan, projects into the future, then we as a board can take those numbers, then project us out into a five or 10-year plan for the overall township. And when we come up with comparables, I've been hearing a lot of discussion about comparables. We can't compare ourselves with a city, I'm going to use Taylor for an example because I know a little bit about their numbers. We can't compare ourselves with a city that brings in $60 million a year. Their police department alone is 12.5 million dollars a year. We can't compare with that. We can't compare our wages with them. And going back to police, I understand, I guess I want to retain officers. A hundred percent do. I understand what happens when you start having these rollover. People will come in, it's going to turn into a training ground if we don't take care of the new officers coming in. That is where the issue lies. I understand that. We have to focus more on their contracts as they come through. But at the end of the day, like several already pointed out, we only have so much money to go around here. It isn't as simple. And we can't continue to operate like we had been in years past. I'm, I'm done for now.
Thanks, Mark. Um, does anybody else in the night want to just say one thing? But Mickey, did you?
I do. I do. So what I'm asking for, for Janelle, we have the funds. We definitely have the funds because it's one thing to say it's in this proposed budget. It's another thing to say we don't have the revenue to pay it. And guys, I'm just going to be straight. I'm counting Janelle and then one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight men that make more than the one female. Unacceptable. Absolutely unacceptable. So I, I think it's ridiculous because what this does is it just keeps that huge gap for a whole nother year. It's just wrong.
Okay. Thank you. Um, now as a board, we had Jameson stating we, he would go for the split. Do we?
I think you have to accept my, you have to accept my amendment, right? And there has to be a second.
Wait, for it to accept the amendment, don't all, everybody on the board has to, if you're going to change.
Someone, someone's got to second his and then you'll have to make a vote to accept it.
Could we repeat the amendment so we?
Oh, absolutely. I'm sure. So I, I offered, so initially, um, there was a motion to give Ross the, I, I shouldn't, I shouldn't use names. The DDA community development director a $10,000 raise. I think a raise is warranted, um, given some of the work he's done in the past year and some of the certificates he has. It doesn't sound like there's a lot of support for a raise of that amount on this board right now. Um, so my amendment would be to give Ross a $5,000 raise and then to give Janelle a $5,000 raise. And she is in an enterprise fund, so that has zero impact on the general fund and would have no impact on our ability to pave roads, fix sewers, build bridges. So I think, I think to Mickey's point, um, and I won't speak on gender, but I think Janelle has merited, um, a, a serious look at the work she's done and what she's done for the airport. And it is fair when you look at this. Um, I organized my sheet by, uh, total. She is a department head, but she's the lowest paid department head. So, um, I think we can remedy that now and I do believe we need a step program. Um, but that would, that's my amendment, right? Split the difference, give each of them 5,000. Uh, and I, I think that's a, I think the employees know that we are in a budget constrained environment and that is a gesture of goodwill, right? So.
Okay. Can you please, I'm sorry, can you just please say your.
Oh, sorry. I, I went off on a tangent.
No, good. I like tangents. Just say it again and we need a second.
All right. I'd like a, I'd like to make a point.
Certainly.
Of, so the initial, initially we're voting on the DDA director for a $10,000 raise. And then, so now you're adding another manager in, the airport manager into that. I'd like, if you're going to do them, I'd like to do them separately.
We can't, we already voted on the agenda. We can't add another item.
Okay. So.
So we have to, we have to bill package at this point.
And we withdraw the motion as it now stands and restate it?
I mean, I think the amendment does the same thing. It has the same effect.
Then a pointed question of, we can always add, we can always make a budget amendment during the fiscal year, should we want to give somebody a pay raise.
And, and point of process is that the first meeting in April, I'll bring forward non-union wage adjustments for approval by the board. It makes it easier, obviously, if it's a budgeted wage that's already built into the budget versus a non-budgeted wage, but you can still approve that and then a, then a budget amendment would have to occur to facilitate that. If you don't like the, if you don't like the packaged, um, the packaged action item, right? Because maybe you want to vote yes for one and no for the other. Um, you could vote no on it and then we could amend it again to just back to whatever you wanted.
I, I'd like to keep this cleaner and, and not that people don't deserve raises, but I'm, I'm also, I also know the dollar amount that was given as a raise last year and the dollar amount that's asked for this year and the percentage, um, and, and each individual, when they come to work here, I believe recently, I'll, I'll ask, uh, manager, uh, Phil, they, do they receive a, uh, uh, when they're asked to join the township, they receive a letter that says you'll, this is your initial pay. Do they get a step up, step ups in the sometimes?
Sometimes they do. Yeah. So you, the, the employment letter, employment offer basically would, would say either.
Sometimes they do, yeah, so you, the, the employment letter, employment offer basically would, would say either what your wage is when you start, or it'll say what your wage is when you start, and dependent upon a successful performance evaluation, it can go to X, Y, or Z over a period of 1 or 2 years following.
Okay, so, my concern is that the, that the pay, that, the percentage increase for this situation is, I, I'd like to discuss that as a group.
So, there's only, if I'm not mistaken, there's only one employee that has guaranteed steps right now?
Two.
Um, I believe everybody, 'cause I don't think we've extended steps out beyond 2 years after employment. So, I think everybody's outside of that, so I think we have one that's remaining on a, on a step schedule.
If there was two before, but there's one now, there's one left. Um, okay, hold on, it's just so, point of order, so I can understand which way we're going here. Um, it sounds like, and, and please, I'm not putting words in anybody's mouth, but it, it sounds like to me, 'cause I wanna make sure we get this straight, that a $10,000 raise for this action item is gonna be voted down.
Well?
Do we guess and say, can anybody tell me as we go down the line?
Yeah, you can't, you can't take, you can't take a straw poll.
No, but I mean, my point is we gotta change.
I prefer, I prefer Kevin, I think he's got a good point about keeping it cleaner. I also, I'm not against raises whatsoever.
My point is, what are we voting on first?
No one seconded by amendment, so that means it did not amend?
Right.
And it's just the original motion.
And Township Manager Thiel said that we can come back and discuss this further, and possibly vote on it when he presents the?
Okay, can I ask this?
And just, just so you know, you, you guys can add an action item, but it's a special meeting, so it has to be a 7-0 vote.
Yeah, it has to be 7-0.
That's right.
Okay, it's gotta be 100%, one person says no, then it does not get added, because it was not on the agenda that the public saw.
But I can second for what Jamison said, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
That would be an amendment to the original motion. I, I still think we just withdraw the original statement with 10,000 in it, and say, I propose as, as a second motion, 5,000 here, 5,000 there, and go with that.
So, he did a friendly amendment, right?
He had an amendment.
Yeah, he hadn't restated it a second time yet for you guys to vote, so, okay.
That man restated. You go ahead and second it.
All right, uh, my friendly amendment is to adjust the raise for the DDA and Community Development Director to 5,000, and include a $5,000 raise for the Airport Director.
Inclusive, inclusive of the 2.5%?
Yes.
In lieu of?
In lieu of, right?
In lieu of, a flat $5,000 raise, without the 2.5. I wanna make sure I'm clear, that's why I'm asking this question.
It's in lieu of, instead of 2.5, right?
Okay. So, any question, go ahead, Kevin.
So, do we have a second for that?
Yes, she did.
Okay, so, my discussion is, so you're talking about a $5,000 raise total, a $5,000 raise total for both of these individuals, not including the 2.5%?
Right, so, for example, in the case of the DDA Community Development Director, the 2.5% wage increase would resulted in a $76,875 salary. We would say 5,000, which would include that, so it ends up being a market adjustment of $3,500, or, and, or whatever, thereabouts, and the 2.5% of $1,500.
Total, flat 5 grand, that's what we're saying.
So, so, the Airport Director, maybe they deserve a more, more of a raise than that. And that's why I'm saying, when you, when you bundle this together, somebody may be short-changed. I, I don't think it's a clean, it's not a, and, and what if, what if it isn't, what if the pay raise is not commensurate to other managers in the community? We haven't done a survey, we haven't done research, we've, we've looked at pay, just across the top of the line, the pay, but there are other mitigating circumstances that we haven't, uh, taken into it, into consideration. And, uh, I think as a board, we should know what percentage increase we're giving to each individual, and what others make.
I mean, that's a, that's a fair point. I think by that logic, though, you would decline every raise being offered today.
Okay, let's do this, hold on, hold on, let's do this. I wanna make sure we're clear on this, I gotta get it straight. We have a friendly amendment, or we have an amendment by Jamison, we have a second by Mickey. We talked about it, everybody, is there anybody else on this issue, on this action item? Okay, now, what I'm gonna do, can I do a roll call so we get it straight? Is that okay? I mean, just, I wanna make sure.
That is absolutely allowed unless someone objects on the board.
I just wanna make sure the ayes and the noes and the yeses are square here, 'cause I, I, just to make sure, okay. So, action item, that's number 2, correct? So, we're gonna go with Jamison's, 5 flat, 5 flat for DDA Director, Community Development Director 1, and the Airport Manager. Okay, all in favor of that motion? Margaret?
Aye.
Mark?
Nay.
Okay. Kevin?
No.
Okay. Jamison?
Aye.
Mickey?
Aye.
William?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye, also.
Okay, so, motion passed.
Just to make it very clear, this is for inclusion of those dollars in the projected budget, or in the proposed budget, which you are gonna be asked to approve on the 24th. An additional action item will be coming before the board, actually authorizing those adjustments at the first meeting in April after the budget's adopted.
Derek, come on, man, just do it now.
Question, so at that meeting, we need to bring something else up, 'cause Kevin made a good point. Can I bring something, at that, at that meeting, to, to his point, as far as the disparity between Ms. McNeese, and, I'm sorry, Airport Director and the, uh, DDA, or whatever the case may be?
Absolutely.
I know we did a 5 point, or $5,000 across the board, but Kev made a great point. And I, I, I think it should've been addressed a little bit more than it was.
Absolutely, you can bring up whatever you want.
I agree, I do agree, I, I.
I would like to hope that we would be taking his advice, and in this coming year, after we've made these decisions, we have to get something going, and we've got a lot of other things to do, that we will pick this up and deal with it to make something more sound and tidy for the year ahead.
Absolutely, that, you know, the discretionary, you know, annual decisions on budget, you know, salaries and whatnot, I don't think it works well for the, for the board, I don't think it works well for the community, I don't think it works well for the employee. You know, I think the employee should know what the expectation is, you know, if they continue their employment here, you know, for their salaries, not just leaving it to chance, so, I agree wholeheartedly with what's being commented on tonight.
All right, thank you very much. Action item number 3.
What is action item number 3?
I'll, I'll, just let me, yeah, it's Fire Department, let me, I'll do it. To approve Fire Department Administration Wage Line Item allocations. If I can get a second, then I'll explain.
Uh, what are the amounts?
I'll explain it if I?
Second, I'll second.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. What Derek and I did, again, we used to have managers here, like, when they got promoted or got hired in, the Township Board would just come up with a number and give it to them. We came up, um, with the wage high, wage low for the managers, um, for new hires. So, what we did is, we took the Fire Department at 70,000 to 82. The reason was, we thought that an individual going out as, you know, Chief Camilleri, we can't give the wage of the individual coming in the same as going out, when the one going out maybe had more certifications, more training, more, more experience. And we do know it's from within, um, the Fire Department has, um, picked an individual, individual from within, and we feel that this is palatable for, uh, their experience, or, and, and I apologize, the only way I can explain this is lack of certifications and experience, and this is the reason we came up with this. Now, what we did allow, it's a two-part, two-part issue, maybe I should've put it in this, but we did allow, as you, uh, board members remember, we did allow them to put money into their budget higher than 82, just to put in there. So, if the Township Board changes anything, it's already budgeted, but this is what Derek and I came up with, and this is what we are asking to continue for today.
95 is what's in the budget for Fire Chief, and 72 is what's in the budget for the Fire Marshal. That doesn't include that part-time component, that's in a different line item. Or 72, you said, 95 and 72?
Yeah, 72 is the Fire Marshal, this does not.
So, are those the high range, or is that a starting point?
No, it's really just money, Margaret, like, so, we, we made an offer today, I don't know if you heard, um, for Fire Chief. He may or may not accept it, because we're gonna have some conditions on it, a lot of education and some other things. So, we'll get a group of us to get together and come up with an offer. And then, if he does accept it, we'll have to backfill the Fire Marshal. So, what we didn't wanna have to do is keep coming back on the numbers, we just wanted some money in the pool, and then we will come back, and then, I believe, Derek, won't they actually vote on the, the amount that we, um, off, when we make the offer, won't that include the dollar amount?
We'll tell you what the offer is. The board will say what the offer is, they won't. The commission will only come to us as a recommendation, correct?
Yeah, and then we'll, as a boat, as a board, right?
Correct.
So, so you're not saying that, hey, yeah, they'll get increases, and, and we're not gonna do anything unreasonable. We just wanted some in there, and then we'll get together, make a recommendation, and it'll come back to you guys to say yea or nay.
One more point, so, Margaret, you understand, um, the amount for this position right now, when the applications went out, was 70 to 82, that's what we're asking. If, when we talked about it at the board level, when Chief Camilleri came up, he put a few thousand dollars more in his budget, just in case we were gonna be, um, what's the word, I don't wanna say? No, not sure, hire, so, in case we were gonna be, uh?
Generous?
Yeah, I guess that's a good word.
I think, I think the way it was phrased was, you had the budgetary capacity to take into consideration all potential situations, right? I think that those situations have narrowed down some now compared to where we were with the recommendation today, but nonetheless, I think that they're still recommending to have at least flexibility, still not knowing for sure where they're gonna end up being with, with the candidates.
Right, so that's my point, and I think Kevin probably encompassed more of what I was trying to explain to with a scale. So, that's why I'm asking, so when, are we using the number 95 for Chief, is that what was recommended?
No.
No, no.
70 to 82 is what we came up with.
Okay.
Derek and I, as the HR Director and the Township Supervisor.
What, what the Police Department was recommending was a, was a placeholder of 95 in that.
You mean Fire?
I'm sorry, Fire, what the Fire Department was recommending is a placeholder within that budget line item for salaries for those two positions.
Yeah, that's why we need a scale, I, I, we need to be able to see the steps and whatnot, I firmly do that.
And that's why we came up with, if you wanna call it a scale, not once you're hired, because we have to see what performance is, we have to see what merit is, we have to see what certifications and training afterwards. We have to see what a person does in a management position, once they get the job. But our scale, and what we're voting on tonight only, is 70 to 82. And once again, you recall that we allowed him to put more money into his budget, just in case, and use the word, I hate to use the word generous, but if we were generous and went over it, that's what we're voting on today.
What you said we're voting on is 95,000 for the Fire Chief?
No.
No.
Isn't that what the?
That's why, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, what are we voting?
We're voting on a scale of 70 to 82,000.
What you'd be voting, what you'd be voting on is the inclusion of 95 and 72 in the budget. That's what you're, that doesn't mean that's what you're gonna pay, that'll come at us at a different point.
Okay, so, we're not voting to give Chief Camilleri a raise?
Camilleri, no.
That's what we're talking about.
Well, I think he got.
We're talking about the Chief of the Fire Department, are we not?
Well, that would be Bob Roscoe, no.
They're just gonna come in with.
And Chief, I think, got the 2.5.
The new guy that they're just picked, who we don't know yet, 'cause they didn't tell me.
I did tell you on the stairs, walking up.
Okay, so?
I'm, I'm confused, what is the, what is the action?
Let's go over again, the action item?
The action item is to approve the budget line items in the proposed budget, to be approved by the board on the 24th, of 95 in that, in that category, and 72 in that category.
Yes.
It's just a, a, a budget number, it doesn't mean that's what you're going to pay those positions.
It's like a bargaining mandate, give us a pool of funds, but we're gonna come back and we're gonna propose something reasonable. But like, say we, we couldn't get, like, Bob turned us down, and we couldn't get anybody inside, and we went out and we got the former Fire Chief of Detroit, who is being paid, you know, more. But I, I'm pretty sure we're not gonna come in anywhere near 95 on a proposal.
Hold on a second, yeah, the bottom line here is, my mistake for trying to separate it, Jamison, because there really was two parts. One was the inclusion in the budget, one was the, what we said that the salary was going to be between 70 and 82. So, Derek is absolutely correct, it's really 70, I guess, 'cause the inclusion in the budget to 95, and the Township Board will state what the salary will be, period. Okay, so, with that said?
This is, the Fire Marshal will receive a raise.
He will for about 3 days, and we thank him for his service.
And then we'll replace him at whatever.
We'll make an offer, like we would for a new hire.
That's another one coming down the pipe.
It's a separate action, it'll come before you guys, and you're not gonna see a 95 offer.
But the Fire Marshal's raise is the 2.5%, it's not to $72,000.
I'd like to go back and make sure I understand all this. Basically, the original idea was we'd go something like 72 to $84,000 as a range, but if something really good came along and we needed 95, we would pay that, am I making sense?
Correct. That's basically yes. That's what they asked for, the Fire Department, and we allowed it at the budget meeting. Correct.
I understand that, I, never mind, that's a side story, it, it works.
Okay, everybody good? So, action item number 3.
We need to have discussion?
Oh, we were, oh, you have more? Go ahead.
I do have more.
You just have to tell me. Go ahead, sir.
So, we're being asked to vote on a pay range for the Police Chief and the Fire Marshal.
Fire Chief.
I'm sorry, the Fire Chief and the Fire Marshal, is that correct?
Correct. Did you say pay range?
Hold on.
Or, you're saying it's only for the Fire?
No, this is only for the Fire Chief.
For the Fire Chief.
And the pay range was 70 to 82, and they requested, can we put money in? 'Cause this is for all the budget, this is all for budget inclusion, not what we're paying him, just to what he can put in the budget that we okay it.
Okay.
That's correct, it's 70 to 82, and they asked, can we put some more money in, and we okayed it, and said, we'll talk about it at this meeting. That's where we're at.
And, at this meeting, we've announced that a letter, a, a, an offer has been made to somebody.
Well, it hasn't been made yet, we've, we voted to make a recommendation for Fire Marshal Roscoe, but we haven't put together an offer yet, we haven't even talked as a group about what that amount would be. It's not gonna be 95, it's not gonna be near it. The 95 is just throw some money in there, let us go and get a, a Fire Chief, and if necessary, a new Fire Marshal. But we will come back, and you guys will actually vote on whether you agree with the pay. We are not deciding pay today at all, we're not deciding a pay range either.
And I go, I go back to my original, so, we are making an ad hoc decision here on, without a lot of information, as far as I can tell, what other, other chiefs in our area make, and their benefit packages. Uh, I'm, I'm not aware of that, and because it is part of the, uh, uh, Police, Fire, uh, I, I really think this should be run by our attorney, our Township Attorney, before we made it, make a decision, because it does have ramifications for our Police Chief, and our Fire Chief, and other, other folks down the line. I don't think we should be voting on it tonight without careful consideration of what the litigation might, uh, roll out of this.
Well, let me just explain this. Derek and I, the HR Director and the Township Supervisor, has to come up with a salary range when we put out for applications. We have to tell them what the salary range is. The salary range for this position right now, no change, is 70 to 82,000. This is for the inclusion into the budget that the Fire Department asked and said, well, what happens if we do? Good point, and no offense to anybody here, but we go get some superstar that is gonna change the world, that we might have to pay him a little more, can we put it? This is just to put it in their budget, this isn't to pay anybody, the range is still 70 to 82, period. We're just going tonight to add some money to their budget that they requested, in case it's higher. So, they would have the money in there, that's all it is. We did our homework about what other Fire Chiefs make, we did our homework about, and, and please, don't misunderstand us, but other volunteer organizations, we're really not volunteer, 'cause they are paid. We did our homework about, and, and please don't misunderstand us, but other volunteer organizations, we're really not volunteer, because they are paid, but it's a volunteer setup. What?
I call them volunteer.
You do, and you're their liaison, so I can say that. So this has nothing to do, and I, Kevin, I'm with you on the other part. I'm with you that we have to go one step further for the range, once somebody's in the scale. I'm all in favor of what you're saying, one hundred percent. But this one is only for, we're not changing the pay scale here. We have to do some talking and voting if we're going to change it. It's seventy to eighty-two with money put aside, in case we decide. He just wants it in the budget to be proactive, that's all. So do you see what we're only voting on tonight?
I'd like to add a comment here.
If you don't like it, I get it.
No, no, I'm, so my question is, you're asking to go up to ninety-five thousand dollars for a...
I'm not.
Who, who is?
It was in that budget meeting that we had.
The Police Chief, or the Fire Chief rather, asked, I would like to put some money away in case this seventy to eighty-two doesn't work out and the Township Board decides to change it. You can put money away for whatever you want. It's not going to change my mind. It's not going above eighty-two, I promise you that. That's all I'm telling you.
Well, he is the sponsoring legislator. Because you said, who is?
The, the, so the Fire Commission is asking for this, the Fire Chief is asking for this.
They haven't asked for a raise yet. When John Camilleri came to us, the Fire Chief, and said, can we put money away in the budget in case you guys, and again, I use the word are generous. And I said, John, you can do what you'd like, we'll vote on it. We did, and this is what, what was part of it. We didn't get this part in, but this is just to put in his budget, and if it's not used for salary, it's going to go somewhere else, obviously.
Does this result in a raise for the people currently in these positions, though?
No.
No?
No, this is nothing to do with a raise.
This is actually a lower pay range than what John Camilleri...
So what hap, what happens if a, in, in, as a, an example, what happens if a Police Chief comes and says, I would like to have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar, uh, high and a, you know, a, a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five thousand for a Police Chief?
What do you mean? We have, we vote on it, everything. They don't just come in and tell us, this is just money set aside.
Okay.
This is all this is. This is not anything of a raise, this is nothing. It's only money set aside that he requested and we said, fine. You have the money, set it aside. My personal opinion, it's not going over eighty-two, period. I'm telling you right now, for me.
Well, when you say i- it's eighty-two plus the sixty-four?
Well, because we have to backfill the Fire Marshal. Yeah, that would be for the other...
Well, you're, you're...
No, there's no eighty-two plus sixty-four in this.
My point is, you're already saying, though, that you're replacing the Fire Marshal.
If, if Bob accepts the offer and everything goes through, because there will be conditions in that offer for education and other things.
I, I think there are a lot of unknowns here and thank you for explaining it.
I, I hope, thank you.
I, I'd like to add just one last comment here, if you don't mind. I think that we're learning something here. I think that we have the need to act. We're sitting, dealing with a situation where we would prefer that some things be a bit different. But it, as I'm listening to it, we're not throwing the baby out with the bathwater in, in this situation. Anything that we do in these terms where there's some, some flexibility, provides opportunity for our approval app before a final decision is made. But I think the biggest benefit of this conversation is, given those observations, is that we have a marker and if we follow it, it's a reminder to get going on these very issues after the budget is passed, so we have a different circumstance to deal with when the future one comes up next year.
Okay, yeah.
And I think that I'm willing to accept that at this point.
I agree with you, Bill. I agree with you, I do.
Supervisor?
Yes, sir.
I have a quick question. So you said you and the manager here come up with a pay range, is that correct?
Say that again, I didn't hear first.
You come up with a pay range so you could advertise it, correct?
We need a pay range to advertise it, and I looked into...
And you come up with a pay range to advertise it, correct?
Correct.
Correct. Where did you advertise it?
The advertising within the Police Com, or the Fire Commission, I keep saying Police. The Fire Commission wanted to go from within and we accepted that.
So it wasn't advertised outside as our policy stays, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Is that, is that a point, or what?
No, I was just asking, it's one inch sure.
It is how you feel the policy.
I was clarifying.
I'm clarifying, I don't like being put in the corner. That's all I'm telling you.
That's all I was saying. I don't either.
Okay, so...
There, there is an issue there that...
That's separate. You guys want to go over that? We'll go over it another time, I have no problem. I want to talk about it, because I got issues with it. But if that's your issue, let's vote on what we're talking about each time. As a board, we need to vote on what we're talking about. And sometimes we do go off task, I get it, all of us do, including myself. Let's vote on this now. Okay. Okay, action item number three. Let me pull it back up, just to make sure, uh... To approve Fire Department Administrative Wage Line Item allocations. All in favor, say aye.
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 All oppose?
Nay.
Okay, make sure we got the right, we need to know.
Nay.
No.
Nay. Who else said nay?
Aye.
I heard three nays.
I said aye.
Aye, aye.
I was aye.
Aye. I'm sorry, Margaret.
Oh, I said aye.
Okay, so it's five-two. I'm sorry, Brian. I thought I heard more. It echoed.
That happens sometimes.
Okay. Police Department Administrative, to, oh, go ahead, sir.
Is it, uh, may I make a comment within the meeting as part of Robert's rules? Okay.
Say whatever you want.
The... I, I, I just think that this is, um... We, we're making financial decisions that we don't know, in, in some of these instances, we don't know how they will affect the total, not, possibly not in this case, but we don't know how they will affect our total spending. And we have, uh, I believe, last year we had a, the taxpayers had a large increase. The average homeowner probably saw an increase of about eight percent, uh, in their tax bill. This year, there's going to be a increase, uh, in their tax bill. And I think that when we make these budget decisions, I, at some point, I, I'm hoping that we can know the ramifications for the taxpayer before we vote on them. So we know that a dollar amount for the average homeowner, or how it will, how it will affect the, the, the bottom line. So, you know, when we, we've talked about pay raises within a silo and, you know, each individual silo, we need to know what the pay raises and are going to, how they're going to affect the taxpayers each year. And, and I think that's very important. Thank you.
Kevin, Kevin, I, I agree with you on that, a hundred percent. The, the reason I voted the opposite way was that we seem to be, in my mind, short on time. I think I used the term colloquially, throwing the baby out with the bathwater. This year, that isn't going to happen. But if we make a marker in the sand and say, we're going to review the very issues you're talking about and be prepared for next year, we've, we've been expedient, for want of a better term. I'm not saying I like it all, but you, you, sometimes things aren't always entirely the way you'd like them to be.
I, I, I think, I think Kevin makes a, Kevin makes a good point, and I don't think this is what you meant, Kevin, but I just want to clarify that none of the actions this board is taking tonight will increase anybody's taxes. Right?
Yeah, I want to make sure.
I, I would say that they, these actions we're taking tonight will increase everybody's taxes.
I have to agree with Kevin.
That's empirically not true. Like, how, how is, how is it going to re, they have to vote on their own tax raises.
We also talk about legacy costs.
Not in every instance.
But the, the, okay, well...
And I, so, we can further discuss this and find a...
Yeah, this won't be discussed tonight, but I get both your points, but I don't agree, and I, we will, we, we need to discuss this then, Kevin, because the tax base and what you're voting on for the mill increase for anything or renewal, isn't based upon these. It's based, these were all based upon what was in the budget already, which isn't going to increase anybody's tax a dime. So, you're correct in one end, Jameson, you are correct in the other end. And I feel, if you want to talk about it, we can do it later, but this isn't the time.
Thank you, Joe.
To talk about it.
Thank you.
I agree with you, though. Now, hold on, sorry, let me, please, don't misunderstand us. Somebody's going to have to show me that our taxes will go up because of what's already budgeted. That's what my point is. So, if it's, if it's legacy in that, then we can talk. Let's go to number four. Um, that would be to approve the Police Department Administrative Wage Adjustment Budget Inclusion. After a second, I will explain the numbers and give them out to you.
Second?
Okay, second, um, oh, that's all right, he's, he'll be back, we'll get it down for you. Margaret? Um, that would include, for the Chief, a twelve thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-dollar raise, for the Deputy Chief, eleven thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-five, for the Lieutenant, eleven thousand, three-ninety-six, for the Confidential Secretary, six thousand, three-hundred-and-eighteen, for a total of forty-one thousand, seven-ninety-nine, and the total cost of the Township, um, that I received from Teresa is approximately fifty-one thousand dollars for those four.
Okay. Can you give me those one more time?
How about I give them to you like this?
Okay, that would be great.
Is that good? Okay. Um, Margaret, would you like to go first, being the Police liaison, or would you?
So, I've, I've handed out information to everybody. I've kind of been going through this for a little while now and I've sat back and listened to, you know, the comments pointing out how Police is the biggest, um, biggest department leveraging the general fund. That is where they draw from. Um, I would also point out that we need to either be really clear when we say these things, that, you know, is public safety considered our primary, um, issue? Meaning, is that the most important thing to us? If so, from everything I've provided, not just comparables, but overall information, um, specifically what they do, how hard they're working, the, um, the deficits they are working with and handling well. Um, I'd also like to point out that they have not really been, Chief Carmack, from the moment he was placed in his position, was very clear about the budget. He's going to need assistance. He came to the Board, I think he's one of the only, um, Department Heads that regularly brings forth his budget, so if there are any questions or concerns, he addresses them. They put forth a millage. Um, we won't get into, I don't like to look backward, but I am going to say, how that millage was handled by the past Board was extremely unfortunate. It caused a lot of confusion with the language, with the change from a super millage to the new millage that was put out. They, again, from my way of looking at it, they did not get the support they needed and they needed that millage badly. That was to keep them functioning. They have not had their twenty-fourth officer, that has been going on for five years now. That just, it creates more of an issue. And I am asking that they get these increases to make them at least somewhat close to what other downriver areas are paying their, their staff, their administration staff. Um, we can, there's, Taylor is not involved, there are some larger communities involved, but also the smaller communities that are comparable to us are in that list. And I really feel that we're doing a disservice when we do not acknowledge what they do for us. And if anybody has questions on what they do, I'm happy to provide it. But, um, I would also like to say, knowing how this might go, I would like to pull the Confidential Secretary um, from the other three when we do this discussion. Because she is phenomenal. You do not find people like this just growing on a tree. She came into this position, position a year ago, and I can tell you specifically, she has found, and this is just in the last few weeks, she renegotiated two contracts for an almost six K savings. She found supplier billing invoices that were submitted with errors. She caught them, she addressed them, and they had to re-bill at the lower rate that she found. She doesn't just sign off on anything, she doesn't hand anything off like that. She requires very limited oversight or supervision, if you will, and she's extremely proficient. Um, she has worked with Teresa, Teresa acknowledged this during the meeting, and I really appreciated that because we've got to start addressing the fact that we've got some really good people and I don't want to see a turnover of these people. That is my concern. And while I fully understand when, you know, Mark points out, you, we have to be fiscally responsible. I totally align, I get it, I truly do. But at the same time, I feel we also have to be cognizant of the fact that this is public safety. It's a very important thing and I don't think we should be derogatory in how we speak of it, so...
Thank you, Margaret. Uh, Mark, you had something?
Yeah, thank you. So, uh, just to start off with. Y'all sat down here?
Oh, shoot, sorry, guys.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Just to start off with, I, I understand about being cognizant about the administration. Obviously, I'm going to be pro-police, I'm thirty years into it. I have nothing against the Police Department, I want to see it grow and prosper, I've talked to you about that as well. But you talk about some of these comparables, and some of these comparables are with departments that are larger and smaller, and some of the smaller departments don't have a Deputy Chief, don't have certain layers of management. So they cut those out and they do give the Chief a little bit more. For a reason I expressed earlier in two and three, I still think we need to have a comprehensive business plan put ahead for all the departments, not just the Police, not just the Fire, all of them. To include and accommodate for these raises, how they're going to come up and how, where, where are we going to get it from? Going back to what I said earlier too, regarding the Police Department and becoming a training grounds, I think we're, we're headed, we're headed in a crash course for becoming a training ground. And I know Joe knows what I'm talking about when I say that. We're going to have a high rotation of officers. I think we need to focus more so on the officers coming in and how we retain them. We even need to work on retention. I don't believe the management is going to leave right away. They may eventually, but I think it'd be good for another year. I want to go ahead and pack in to the next year, how we're going to support them, bring them up to maybe our, our community standards, or sorry, surrounding standards for other Police Departments that are in the area. I'm totally on board with that, but right now, I think it's a mistake. And Teresa, please correct me if I'm wrong, but for this particular raise you're asking for now, it's going to be, is it fifty-one or forty-one thousand? I forget.
That's the cost to us, it was fifty, I explained.
So fifty, so, is that going to put us over our current budget?
No, I'm, I'm, that was the total change. If we did the twelve percent, that would be the forty-four thousand.
Over, over, please, over our current budget?
No.
No?
That's in total.
In total.
I'm confused.
So our, our current budget, Bill, give me one second, please. So our current budget is, is balanced, correct? The overall Township budget. Am I correct in that? So if we add another forty or fifty thousand, whatever the number comes out to be, are we going to go above and beyond that? So are we going to be in the red, as a Township as a whole?
So the differential is, is... The differential between what is currently in the budget, which is two-and-a-half percent. So the differential is nine-and-a-half percent. So that differential is a total cost increase of thirty-five thousand. So at the current budget that was presented, which includes two-and-a-half percent, we were at break-even. We did add the potential sale of the, the house that the Township had acquired, because back ta, the taxes hadn't been paid. That's what gave us the two-hundred-thousand-dollar surplus.
But we don't have that surplus yet, correct?
No, we don't.
So right now?
And there's a potential that we wouldn't, we may not get it within the next fiscal year.
Correct.
It's, there's probable that we will, but not for sure.
We can't count on it. So as of right now, with the numbers I have in front of me right now, we're balanced.
Correct.
If we approve of this budget, I'm sorry, this amendment for the pay increase for the non-union, that's going to put us over as of right now, correct?
Correct.
And we're hoping we sell this house, which may not happen.
Correct.
May or may not, I don't know, I, I don't know. Nobody knows here. So, so as of right now, we're balanced, and if we approve this, we'll be over budget.
Correct. Another, an adjustment would need to be made, whether it's Police, that something else, to get us back in balance.
So do we either take away from other departments, or would you go out into the public and we raise mills?
We, we can't raise mills.
No, I, I don't know if there's something else here. If there's a sliding policy that we have to raise a mill to, to meet our budget, that's what I'm talking about.
Correct.
So, okay, so there's a potential that we could have to actually raise our, our taxes here on gross yield for our citizens to cover that.
Correct.
Before, okay. Before, okay, I'm all set, thank you, thank you very much.
Mark, thank you for that, that clarified for me a lot, that, your head was, we're in the same ballpark on that.
Okay, you're welcome, thank you, Bill.
Hold on, let Kevin, let, let Kevin go, he was starting. And then Mickey, you're next.
Okay.
Finance Director, uh, would you tell the community how much the fire department, how much out of the, how much, what their deficit is for this?
Wait, fire, police?
I'm sorry, police, police.
Oh, you said fire, yeah, sorry.
No, thank you for, what's, what, how, what's, how deep in the red is the police department?
Currently, it's $285,000.
Okay, thank you, and I'll ask the question, so this 12% increase is for the chief, deputy chief, lieutenant, and confidential secretary?
Correct.
And how many, we have, I'll ask, uh, manager, Phil, how many police officers do we currently have?
Uh, I believe 11, 11 officers, patrol, patrolmen.
Yeah, you're talking about total, or?
Total, please.
There's 20, there's 23 department members, 23 employees.
I'm not sure which one you're asking, that's why.
No, that's, so there are 23, and the multi-year, five-year plan that we've had, we had, we were working with over a 10-year period suggests that we have, for optimal public safety, we should have 24 officers, that's what the plan says. And so my, my point here is, we're saying that we're short, we're down a police officer, we only have 23 officers.
We have 22, just to clarify, because we just lost another one.
So, we, we're, we're, so for public, for the sake of public safety, my feeling is, or my belief is, the most important thing is that we have enough officers on the road to get to somebody's house within the, you know?
Three minutes?
Within three minutes, to save their lives. And I appreciate that the, the four people we're talking about are, have done a, a very, very fine job as managers. However, I think the most important thing is that we have 24 officers, and we don't have enough money, or it wasn't, it doesn't appear that we've had enough money to fill in that, to fill the 24th officer. And I think the most important thing is that we have a, a 24th officer, so that we can get to somebody's house within that three-minute period. If we don't have that, we could have situations where, uh, you know, the, the police don't, and the police are the first responders on the island. That means the, the fire department comes after the police department. And that's just because, that's how it's been, it is. And so to protect the public, we really do need 24 officers, and I don't feel that it is in the public's best interest to give those four off, those four individuals a pay raise, when that could go towards hiring the, the 24th officer. And I think that for a variety of unfortunate, uh, unfortunate things have happened, we need to get the police budget balanced, we have to see what happens going forward. We have a, uh, police, uh, you, or the, the union, uh, contract is up this coming year, and I think as part of all of that, I'd like to, to review everybody's pay within the police force.
Thank you.
So.
Kevin, thank, uh, Mickey, did you, uh?
Yeah, let me just add really quick, we've got, of those three command staff, two that are going to be taking road patrol duty, and they're taking road patrol duty in addition to their regular jobs, just so we're all clear on that as well. These are the three people, am I grounded or something?
No, go ahead.
Go ahead.
These are the three people in command staff, in addition to our confidential secretary. The chief and the deputy chief are going to put in all their regular hours, plus take shift work. So, I just, I, I cannot express this more, and to their, to their point, this should have been-
So are you saying they're going to be working 16-hour shifts? Is that what you're saying?
Potentially, yes.
Not potentially, are they working 16-hour shifts?
They're going to work shift work when they need to, could it be up to that?
I want to make sure this is clear in my notes, okay.
Can they, they, can they do additional work? Yes.
They can do whatever they want, I'm asking you.
Well, they're going to have to, is my point.
Okay, okay.
They've got, well, now two guys going on FMLA, they've still got one person that's on workman's comp, so they know this summer they're going to struggle with vacation time and the FMLAs. So I, I just want, I just want, just want everybody to understand. And I get what everybody's saying about, you know, they're, they're in the red. Okay, well, how did they get there, and for how long have they been there? And we're only now just waking up and going, oh, we've got to do something about it. I don't disagree, I just got here, I just got on this commission, and we are working really hard to address this right now, really hard. So I just want to make sure we're really clear on all of this. It's not like I'm, you know, not cognizant of the fact of where our budget's at.
Okay, thank you. Mickey, you are up.
So, so I don't think, and, and Margaret, I'm not trying to slam or anything, because I fully support the police, but I don't think it's going to pass as it is. If those guys started working like 16-hour days, if I were you, that's when I'd start arguing for a budget amendment, because we're always going to look at current circumstances. But the one thing I wanted to raise is, you said something about, like we did, making maybe a friendly amendment to only look at the confidential secretary. And I just want to let you know that if you put it to just her, and you proposed a reasonable raise, I would second it for you.
Uh, Jameson, you're up.
So, um, public safety is extremely important, right? And if this were a dedicated millage, like with the fire, I would support it. But the general fund needs to do more than just pay for police, right? Like, unfortunately, at our current numbers, they're already consuming all of the tax dollars brought into the general fund, which really also has to pay for the water treatment plant, the roads, the sidewalks, the clerk, the treasurer, the manager, right? There are other functions of the general fund. And so far, the budget adjustments we've made in this meeting have only impacted the general fund by $5,000. This, the current PD budget is already 285 grand above the total taxable amount of the general fund and the PD's dedicated millages. And this additional 35 grand would bring them up to $320,000. And that's going to start, in order for us to make that work, like Mark said, we're going to literally have to go back to either DPS or one of the other departments and take money away from them. I, I think, I think we've got a, we've got to figure something out, but giving them a raise right now isn't, isn't going to, isn't going to make it better, right? We still, you know, we need to do, we got $30 million in water pipes, we got $50 million in bridge, we still don't have a school resource officer. At what point do we draw the line in the sand? And hey, we have a 24-person police department, and our chief's making 150 grand a year, but our toilets don't flush, you know? So I really think, um, I, I think unfortunately, this is, this is, it's just like at the federal level, right? Even the Department of Defense is taking cuts, and I know the police officers are great Americans, who work really hard, and the firefighters wake up in the middle of the night, but, you know, soldiers, sailors, and marines are hard workers too, and unfortunately, that's just the state of government finances right now. I don't think we can afford, uh, I don't think we can afford to support this raise, because it's just going to take another chunk out of general fund spending.
Thank you, Jameson, I want to, I want to make comment. Margaret, this is for you first, I want to apologize, we all have fire in us. I've been hearing a lot of things, and this, not saying you were incorrect, and I kind of jumped out. Please, accept my apology, I, I just want, because we're all in the same boat, and we're going to do well together. But, but I think I need to do that for you, because I did kind of jump out there.
This is business, I get it.
Some of my work that I've done, I've been listening to a lot of different areas, I dissected the numbers, the numbers, I don't think that the lieutenant's position, he's not even out of line for what the others have. I don't think the chief right now is, is, he's getting a 2.5% raise. I don't think he's far out of line. The deputy chief, we have three managers, when all, most of the other cities, if you look at, don't have three managers. So I'm not sure what, what actually is occurring, but I do know, I think that they're fairly compensated, and, and I've also heard that we're not competitive. Our benefit package, and I sat with Teresa, our benefit package, I believe, and I will debate this with anyone, is excellent, we have a defined benefit, which most don't have, which I believe is much better than a defined contribution. Um, I, I believe it is, I, we have excellent medical benefits also. I will debate that with anyone, I'm not saying they don't deserve something. The dynamics that give you a raise, or don't give you a raise, that are playing into this, there's some big numbers, Teresa just said 200 plus, what, $285,000 plus, Jameson just noted. If we add what it's going to cost us, that puts us more in the red. I'm not sure we can give raises to individuals when our department's in the red. Now, Teresa did a wonderful job in balancing this budget, how did she do it? She had to remove from all the other, and if I, don't term these correct, make sure you, you correct me, but all the different funds within the general fund, she had to go to, and the money they were saving in these other funds, used, and why did we have to use it? Because I promised the police department too, and we all worked together, I was going to find somehow, some way to balance their budget for this year. We are going to talk after this year, we have to make a plan, we just got in November. She did, Teresa did an excellent job, but we can't keep going to the other funds. Forget about using up all the tax money, that's over. They use 100% of the tax money that comes into this township. Now what we had to do is go to these other funds, take what they have saved in being responsible individuals, and use that for the police, that's fine. For this year, we needed to do this, because we know how important public safety is. And unfortunately, the police department, Margaret, you brought it up, but it is a fact, this is correct, that the people of Grozeal decided with their vote how much money they are willing to spend for police service. Now, with all that said, if we didn't have all these problems and all these dynamics, I think that it'd be more palatable for everyone on this board, and the taxpayers, since we're fiduciaries of their money, to go ahead with something like this. Unfortunately, I believe that 2.5% now for them, and I say the word unfortunately, because I will be voting no for the, these large raises for them, when we are in the red. I don't think we can sustain it, it puts us in the red next year as a start, and I can't sit up here in front of the taxpayers and say, well, you know what? I think that Kevin, very articulate in what he said about the number of people on the road, when we need officers, that was an excellent point that you brought up. And, and it was all factual. Mark, same thing, he brought the same thing up, and I think Jameson, we talked about it, basically all the same. So that is why I wanted to explain why I'm going to be voting no on this. And we will talk next year, and unfortunately, when you have an individual, and they're both, we have a chief that's retiring, I can't hide behind that, he put his papers in. I think he should get as much as he can in his retirement, and have a healthy, happy retirement, and do whatever he wants to do. But I can't see giving a raise when you've already put your retirement papers in, and then the deputy chief is going right after him. Now, is the deputy chief's papers in yet? No, not yet.
Right.
But what I'm told is he's going right after. In good conscience, I can't give them this, which is only going to hit us in legacy costs. It really doesn't do anything for Grozeal Township to give him a raise today, when they're, when one is leaving this calendar year, and one is leaving the next calendar year. So we will talk about it next year, for who's ever there, and whoever takes anybody's place, it's their job to fight for themselves on what their self-worth is, and why they believe their self-worth is. We cannot negotiate for those coming up, and we can't negotiate for those already gone, or on their way out. So that's where I'm at. Bill, I think you were the last one on here?
I'm, I'm in accord with you and Kevin on the essence of this. The, the reason I voted the way I did with fire and the adjustment was that I, it's my understanding it has not added to our costs. But when we have these people who are leaving that are getting a raise, that doesn't bake for me, I can't, I can't live with that. These are the kinds of unknowns I was talking about early in the meeting, when I was talking about, we've got all this stuff coming in, 60 million on the bridge, and, and 30 million on the pipes, plus all these things that are going on here. We're not Taylor, I think it was Taylor we used as an example here, of who's got a lot of money compared to us. We're going to have to accept our circumstance as it is, and thoughtfully try to work our way through it, and, and see where we come up, and I, I really mean we should try to put that among the things we will take care of, after we've got the budget passed and the bridge working, and, and the, the new plan for the future put together. It's got to be in there, so I'm in accord with you, Joe.
All right, thank you, Bill.
Okay, just really quick, just, I want to point out, I see how this is going to go. So I just want to make sure we're all really clear on this. I'm not doing this for individuals, these are the positions, that's the positions, not names against the positions, they would just obviously benefit. So set that aside when we're talking about, you know, Chief Carmack's retiring, et cetera. But I don't know if, even though this is like my thing, I didn't make the action item, so either myself or Mickey said it, I'd like to make a friendly amendment for the confidential secretary, so she can at least make sure that she is getting a raise, I firmly believe that's required. You know, we went out of our way for other people, and I'd like to make sure we're doing this for her position. And I will say that I talked with Chief Carmack, and he's willing to forego his 2.5, and you can split it with, um, either Wendy can take it all, if we're not going to, you know, go through with this raise for her, or split it between the deputy chief and the lieutenant.
Can I say something? Um, so, I second, right? Thank you.
We don't have a solid motion, do we?
How do we?
She's going up with either or here, and we haven't decided which one we're going to do.
How do we do this, then?
So what is the amendment?
Yeah, what, what?
Can I, point of order, so we cannot add another item on tonight, to tonight's meeting?
You can add another item, but it does have to be a 7-0 vote to add another item.
Makes it harder to pass.
We can vote.
It doesn't have to pass 7-0, but it has to be 7-0 to add it.
Add, do you want to?
Because it wasn't on the original agenda, it's a special meeting. It's a special meeting, you can't just add things.
So what I'm asking is, if we wanted to give the confidential secretary a pay raise, we could, we could, uh, we could, with a 7 to 0 vote?
Yeah, we could add that.
We could add that. Now, my other question is, the amendment, so if we vote yes for the amendment for the secretary, does that mean we're voting yes for the other raises?
No.
Not with a friendly amendment?
Well, can I, I got a question, so?
You'll just have to make sure when you amend that, you're making sure you're stating exactly what you will be voting for.
So we could take, you could take the three officers out of the?
If, if that's what you're doing, yes.
Exactly.
Or, what I thought, what Kevin's asking though, because I want to make a point. Can we vote on this, and then just say we're going to add, and all seven of us say we'll add another one, and then make Margaret's, um, action item? Is that a one-way?
You could, but you'll still have to amend this one, because it technically, at the moment, still has Wendy in it. You know what I'm saying, so you'd have to take her out of this one?
Yeah. As a point of strategy, though, right? So if, if Margaret, if you remove Wendy, and you put her in a separate action item, one person could shoot it down. If you, right, because we can't, we won't add the action item, right? If one person?
To add it.
So if you amend your current action item, so that it's only Wendy, a 4-3 vote would still carry.
Can we vote first on adding the line item? Or are we in the middle of a motion?
Jameson makes sense, though.
Right.
No, Jameson makes, I think, sense here.
But I mean, so Margaret would know before she does a friendly amendment, if all seven of us voted to add that as a separate?
Yeah, there's already a motion.
So we're in the middle of a motion, so we can't?
Would you like to amend your motion to only include the, and, can you please state the amount in there? Would you like to amend your motion, and then state the amount for the?
Confidential secretary.
Hold on, Teresa has something.
So just a couple of things, when you were talking about the impact of this change with all of them, and you referred to other funds, it's not impacting other funds, it's not impacting the recreation fund, it's not impacting the fire department.
It's not impacting the fire department fund. It's impacting the general fund. It's impacting the departments in the general fund.
That's what I meant. I apologize. Thank you.
And.
I meant that, but I didn't say it.
The confidential secretary, I'm just pointing this out as far as the percentage or the amount of potential increase.
Yes.
She is included on the full-time, non-union employee schedule.
So she received a?
So she's, right now, she's.
She's already gotten it.
She is receiving two and a half percent.
Yeah, she already got 2.5.
He will, yes.
It's budgeted to.
It's budgeted for her to get two and a half.
Okay. So what Margaret could be saying is a flat rate of, just like we did the other? Is that correct that we can do that then, Teresa? So Margaret, would you like to amend it and then give a flat rate? And then Teresa then would make that into the, you know, put that into the, yes, go ahead, Mark.
I said one thing. So that flat rate, whatever it may be.
Mm-hmm.
Because still position that I was talking about earlier, correct? Being over budget for this fiscal year.
Well, that, the two and a half percent is already in the budget, so.
I'm talking about two and a half. I'm talking about above and beyond two and a half.
That's correct. It would be, right. We would have to adjust something else to.
All right, thank you. I'm good. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Do we even know the dollar amount for 2.5 so Margaret can figure out what she wants?
Well, she's at 50-something, yeah.
So it's just the two and a half percent is just over $1,300.
$1,300. So Margaret, would you like to amend it to a flat rate? And then we'll get a second and then we'll vote on that? Would that be?
Yeah.
What the board members want to do?
I mean, it's up, it's up to Margaret.
No, that, that's what I would like to do at this point, please.
Okay.
Before we do that, I'd like to understand clearly what we're doing here. The, the idea is that if we were to give her, if we were to give her a two and a half percent increase, it would be roughly $1,300. So she didn't, instead of making 50, I think I heard, it'd be 51.3. Something like that. But if we, if we put in.
It's 52.6 to 53.965, so 54.
Thank you. Now, the point is if we decided instead that 55,000 or 57,000, we'd have this extra several thousand dollars, you'd pull that from some other portion of the police budget to make it balance?
No.
And we'd be going into the red and taking it out of the general fund.
You would have to, we'd have to adjust something in the general fund, which would most likely be the police department. So something would have to be adjusted.
You'd find somewhere to find that extra.
I've got it figured out. What we're going to do is Chief Carmack wants to forego his 2.5 so that the confidential secretary can get her flat rate of $6,300. And actually, it probably would be more if Chief Carmack is foregoing his two and a half because his rate is much higher than her rate.
So Chief Carmack's rate is 12,240. Wendy's rate is 6,318.
I, I'm talking about his two and a half percent.
He's already got 2.5. This is getting.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I gotta get my abacus out.
So his two and a half percent is 3,000-ish.
But guys, let's not take his two and a half.
It's 25.50.
Let him keep his two and a half and give a reasonable one.
I do not want to take Doug, that's, thank you Doug for doing that, but I don't want to take your 2.5 from you.
Right.
So I, I think, as, having seen the numbers, I think this is getting very convoluted.
Mm-hmm.
I think that it's confusing to the public. It's confusing to me. I think that we, the, the finance director said that we can come back during the year. And if there were people that were left out at this time, we can make adjustments during the year. I think that's a cleaner, neater way to do it. We can justify, put all our ducks in a row and justify making carefully thought-out decisions about tax dollars. And.
Reed?
I, I just think that, and I am empathetic to trustee Shelton and, and she sees what the police do. I know they, they go above and beyond. I think unfortunately, we, we are in a financial situation that really needs, needs further review. And, but I, I do, I see the need to look at other people who should deserve, you know, consideration about pay. So, thank you.
So there's been a motion made and there's been an amendment. So what, or there's been a request for a friendly amendment. So what's your, we still have to, we still have to hear what the amendment is, I guess, is what I'm saying.
So we, we need the flat rate for, with the amendment? Is that what we're saying?
Well, you have to give a rate so we know what we're going on, correct?
Or turn a percentage into a rate.
And I don't want to get so convoluted, as Kevin does say, it is kind of getting convoluted for anything we've been doing tonight, but we got it squared away. The bottom line is what would you like to give her, separate from the others? Only put her on there and we'll vote on it. What are you looking at?
So I would like to make a friendly amendment that we increase the confidential secretary's pay to a flat rate, an additional flat rate of $6,000.
An additional?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Inclusive, yeah.
Inclusive of the 2.5.
No, I need to interrupt you for a minute. I just had a thought that causes me a bit of concern. If you have a group of people who are in a pay grade, and maybe she's just the only one in it, but if you treat one person in a pay grade and there's more than one, there's three or four or 10, if you don't treat them all equally, you can get in trouble if.
We don't have any pay grades.
She's not in the pay grade, she's not a manager, she's totally separate. They just linked her in.
I needed to hear that.
They just linked her in.
I wanted to be cautious with that.
Mark, can I ask you this? I don't want to quibble over $1,000, but we gave, what did I say, Mark?
Yeah.
Margaret.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Let me, let me.
No, no, I apologize if you, I said Margaret.
I'm sorry.
No, we gave others $5,000, $5,000, we split it. That seems to be the number that we're doing. Do you have an issue straight, flat of amending it to $5,000 for her raise? As we did the other two?
Margaret, that's a really good raise.
And that, what that does is it makes it comparable to the others now that it has been given raises. And I get it, it's all about percentage-wise and her and the airport manager were fairly close. So would you be willing to do the 5,000? I think that would be more palatable for what I'm hearing.
Yes.
May I also ask the question? What other administrative assistants? What, what do they make? How is, how is this going to affect the rest of the employees in the township who are doing the same job? How much are they making? And is this, how is this comparing? How, how does this, how does this, how long has this employee been with the township? And how long is the other employees that are doing the same type of work? How long have they been here before they got a pay raise?
Well, they're, they're union.
No, not all of them are union.
There aren't any other secretaries that are non-union?
Well, there are others that do administrative-type work.
So maybe because I come from a corporate world and we look at things very differently, and we've talked about this, pay scales, your different salary levels, your salary grades, you can call it whatever you want to. That would mean that, so I'm coming in and I'm stating that I've worked with Wendy. I've worked with that team. I see how much she does. Our financial director has called out how good she is several times. I'm bringing this in because I'm the liaison for them and I've worked with her. I've seen how much she's saved them on their budget because she has caught things. So to me, again, this is a corporate thing. When you go above and beyond, you don't just get a standard rate. And I've explained, Derek and I talked about this. You get, I'm a top achiever rate, which typically, as we all discussed, is somewhere between a 7 to 12% raise, right? So that's a corporate thing. I guess I have to, as Jameson's pointing out, ground myself on the government concept. But I still believe Kevin, Mark, every, we've said this. We need to have a scale. We need to have somewhere where we're, you know, balancing ourself at. We don't have that right now. And right now, I'm looking to make a friendly amendment to include a raise for the confidential secretary of $5,000, not to include that additional two and a half percent.
Okay, we need a second. Mickey, did you?
Yeah, I'm thinking about it because normally I would see five to, like, seven or 10 would be more promotional increase. I think 3,000 would be reasonable. 3,000, I would automatically second. And it puts her still in a good position with the others, Margaret. You're saying 5,000? If you make it for four, I'll second you.
Well, let's, I don't want to keep, yeah, we got to do one or the other. Is there anybody who wants to second this one? And we can vote yes or no. I mean, that's what we can do.
I would like it to come out of the police's current budget and not out of the general fund budget.
Well, it's going to come out of the general fund if you put in police budget.
Well, no, they could reduce some other component of their spending by $5,000.
They have reduced beyond imagination. And this is why I say, then perhaps we need to have a separate meeting on this because everybody needs to ground themselves and understand how much this team has cut. It is unreal. Now, could they go ahead and use forfeiture money to beat the band and really make themselves look super good? And then next year, we'll have no forfeiture money. Because right now, we can't even support putting somebody in DEA immediately. So if they have a hit, let's say there's a million-dollar hit for forfeiture, they'll not get that because they're not participating in that right now because they need people on the roads. So this is why I say, there needs to be a moment where we all understand how this department works before we start saying, they're taking all the money out of the general fund. Are they? Well, that's because that's where their budget comes from. They're a general fund-run budget.
Okay.
I need to ask another question.
I got to make sure we're square. We got too many things going at once. We have a motion. Did we get a second?
No.
On the 5,000, I'll second it.
Okay, so we do have a second. Okay, Bill, you're up and then we're going to vote.
We had conversation going here about the police department and everything that went on. I'm asking a rhetorical question to maybe clarify my understanding or everyone's. It seems to me that as a, I mean, we only, it's a small number of people. I mean, 24 people we want and we only have 23. But we have four of them that are off, like, on workers' compensation or any of these other leaves that are justified. If they are still receiving payroll, we're not getting anything back for it, which puts us in an unusual situation. And I'm wondering if that is not what has hit us the hardest. I just want a perception of what is going on with the police department. I mean, if they had not had these people out of work for various reasons, would our circumstance have been different? The overtime would have gone down. But the overtime, as I look at it, was something like 162,000. If you're in the red for over 200, that isn't the whole answer, you see?
The department has a structural deficit, aside from the injuries or FMLA or OJIs. It had a deficit before those incidents and it will have a deficit after those incidents, so.
Thank you.
And Margaret suggested that we have a meeting and discuss this further. I, no matter what the vote is, I think that's a great idea.
We have to understand what they do because there is a big gap of understanding. There's a lot of talking about what their budget is and how much they draw from general fund. They are a general fund budget. And this has been a problem for four years now.
To be addressed, as I stated in the beginning.
Agreed.
We have an issue. They are in the red. The township taxpayers have decided how much to spend, how much they want to spend on, and that is, I respect that fully because that's how it works. We need to talk about it.
I agree.
We not only need to talk, we need a plan. We just started in November. This was on the radar. We had to get the budgets through. We got the budgets through. We did well. Again, thank you to Derek and Teresa for all the work you did. Now we're going to vote on this.
Yeah.
Okay? So this is action, I, I'm just going to do it this way. Action item number four. Margaret made a motion and I think Mickey seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. I, I think that's four-three or, did I get more than four?
It sounds like four-three to me.
Yeah.
One, two.
You could go to a.
Yes, I, I think we did. By your hearing?
Does your hearing work?
What about your eyes? You better do it with your eyes.
Could we do a voice vote, please? Individual.
Why don't we have a?
Roll call?
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah. Aye.
Mills is nay.
Flavin is no.
Joe's, yes.
Nay.
Yes.
Kyle is yes.
Okay, thank you. It's, another barn burner. Very good.
It's not an easy issue to deal with.
Teresa, get your abacus out because we, there's going to be some additions here that we got to check up. And I'm sorry, I, my screen just went for the very last one, but I think it was the police. What I have here is a motion to continue Island Fest department reimbursement budget inclusion. Do I have a second? And I'll explain it.
What does that mean?
I'll explain it once we get a second.
I'll second, just so you can explain it.
Yes. Explanation is? The explanation to this is we found in the budgeting that the police department was given $3,000. We just want to square the numbers up. This isn't about anything else.
Oh, God.
$3,000 bucks.
Okay, so the police department was given $3,000 for overtime for their Island Fest overtime during the weekend to keep everybody safe. We got that. Then we find out an expenditure, expenditure from the rec department and on Zaid's budget was $3,000 to give them back. So the point was, it's up to you guys. What do you want to do? This wasn't that big a deal.
The same for DPS too. There was 5,000 for DPS that.
DPS budget's 5,000? Now, I don't know and I apologize, I didn't ask John what the fire department budget is because they're not paid by the hour.
The fire department isn't.
Was there a sniping or anything?
No, there's no.
Okay. Mickey, are you from, no, no familiar? That's all right.
And what is the five thousand for?
It was for, for overtime reimbursement from Island Fest to DPS. So, so essentially, this is...
Oh, DPS, got that.
Yeah.
This is a good question, Bill. It's a good comment. What is this all about? Really, it's a policy decision that's reflected in the budget. Whether the, the township board wants Island Fest to reimburse the various departments that incur costs for the Island Fest event. And budgeting for it or not will ultimately determine how we handle that come June or July or...
And we can always talk about that. We have a lot to talk about during this upcoming year. Um, so this one would be, and I want you to understand this. The reimbursement, if you don't want the rec department reimbursing the police, and we use it in the police budget this year for overtime, you would then vote no for this, correct? If you, this would be a no, and we would remove it.
Sure. No, do not include it.
Is, is that correct?
Now, I'm getting lost.
Go ahead.
It's because of the way the action items phrased.
Teresa needs to speak.
It's already included.
So currently, in the, in the Island Fest department, there is eight thousand dollars. Three thousand for the police department, which is in the general fund, and five thousand dollars for DPW, which is a separate fund, to reimburse them. So in the police department, they have, they're recording that revenue. And, and DPW is. So in conjunction with whether we keep it as an expense in Island Fest, we have to also look at the impact on the two departments that are no longer getting that revenue.
Well, it's already budgeted.
You're aware of that, the, the whole picture.
So the whole picture. Am I correct, though, Teresa? If we don't want the Island Fest or rec reimbursing the departments back, we would vote no on this? Isn't that correct, the way it's worded?
Correct.
Isn't that, that's correct? I want to make sure the board understands this.
Is it all general fund?
We're done.
I don't understand. Is it all general fund?
Island Fest is, Island Fest is recreation department, right? So...
Yeah.
Um, the police department is general fund and a dedicated millage. And then DPS is only general fund.
Recreation department, how do they get their funds?
Oh, well, because they have some dedicated millages as well. You're right, sorry.
Yeah, they're on the...
Okay.
But how does the recreation department get funded?
So by a dedicated millage. So the voters voted to tax themselves for a recreation department. So what this is doing is it's taking eight thousand dollars out of the recreation department and giving it to DPS and PD departments.
If you want that to continue. Now, here's just one argument that I have. I think that deep, or that Island Fest provides a service, not a product, to the people of Groseal. There's a cost to this service. Now, they try to do everything they can within their means by sponsors, okay? But sometimes they do fall short over the years. Sometimes they have seed money for the next year. What this does, it doesn't take away eight thousand for them, possibly for the next year. And this is for the people of Groseal to have an event that is, it's well-attended. We know that. It's very well-attended. So my point was, I'm in favor of voting no because I don't think that the rec or the Island Fest should pay them back because we're already budgeting for them. They're just getting reimbursed. So it's just a revenue expenditure issue, but I just don't feel they should. That's my point.
But does their budget, their proposed budget, keep this in mind? Because they, like, moved all their budget forward. And I think they were thinking they were still getting these funds. Like, will it mess you up, Derek?
For the...
That shouldn't, I just want you to be aware that particularly with the police department, which is in the general fund.
Uh-huh.
They have a line item for Island Fest reimbursement, which is income to them. It's helping to reduce their expense. So when you remove that, we now, we're gonna, we are going to have, we would have a three thousand dollar shortfall in the general fund. And the same thing would apply to the Department of Public Services Fund. We would have to look at the budget and how we're going to replace that, that revenue that they're getting from the recreation fund from the Island Fest department.
Teresa?
So I don't...
If you vote no, you have what you just explained?
I'm sorry.
I'm saying is, I don't, I heard you. I tried to understand you. And I don't know what the consequence was. Was it good or bad? I mean, excuse me, I feel a little ill at ease with this.
It, it's not on the police revenue.
I'm sorry. It's, so if you look at the police budget, there is a line item in their overtime. And their overtime is broken down by, in parts. And part of it is three thousand dollars of that hundred and sixty-two thousand that's budgeted.
But there's no revenue.
And then there's a line item with a credit because of the money that they're receiving from recreation fund. So if, if it's removed from the Island Fest budget, that credit that's in the police budget will also be removed.
So I see the expenditure for Island Fest budgeted in the police department. But looking at the revenue sheet, there's no Island Fest on their revenue sheet.
Well, that's because it's offsetting the expense. If you look on the expenditures, um, a line or two underneath the overtime is, is a reimbursement line. And it's a negative three thousand dollars.
I see.
Isn't it brackets that's...
I see, okay.
Isn't it cleaner to do it next budget since we already moved forward with...
If we, if we relieve Island Fest of that expense, then those, the two departments that are being reimbursed won't have that reimbursement coming in.
Okay. So, so everybody understands. If you want to keep it the same of what is happening with the money, the revenue and expenditures, you would vote yes. If you don't want it this way and have the DP, I'm sorry. The rec department and Island Fest not pay these departments back, you would vote no. Are we at lea, at least clear on that?
No.
So, hold on, this is my department.
Status quo is yes. Status quo is yes.
Can I, can I ask a question from, again, the, how much does Island Fest cost? The taxpayer? And what, how much are they, are they out of their budget, the Island Fest budget? Are they budget neutral?
Yes, they are. And it's not costing the, the taxpayers. I don't know if it's not costing them anything is the right thing to say. But the Island Fest budget is balanced with getting sponsorships.
Yeah.
We're not using tax dollars.
And that, that's been the case over the past number of years?
Correct.
Okay.
They're self-sufficient. And I want to keep them that way as my, as my complete correct.
And, and currently being balanced includes that eight thousand dollar expense in the Island Fest budget.
So voting yes, if I'm understanding, you would keep that going the way it did? The money from the sponsorship paid for the overtime?
Right.
Basically correct.
That would protect the general fund.
Correct.
So we vote yes to make that happen? Or to sustain that having always happen?
So right now, it's, it's in the budget. So you would vote yes to keep it there.
Yes.
Now, Joe wants to vote no. Why, why?
I'm sorry.
To pay the police.
To pay the police and pay DPW, yes.
I brought this up today, Bill, because there was a debate during the budget session of whether or not we should have them reimburse DPS and police. Because we wanted, Island Fest, I wanted to see about seed money that they can use for the next year that they didn't have to pay them. Listen to the police chief who stated, and Doug even stated, "That's our job. I have no problem if we're not reimbursed." Three thousand dollars isn't gonna, we've got a, look, we got a two-hundred-eighty-five-thousand-dollar problem with the police, not a three thousand. So my, my point is that it is a service to the people. And I wanted to get seed money so they could build that up so they wouldn't ever have to come to us. It just helps them more with what they have and how they do it. That's all. If you guys want to keep it the other way, that's fine.
This is, this is my department. So I was the one that asked to have it removed. So Island Fest is budget neutral. It doesn't cost taxpayers anything. It generates its own money and uses sponsors to achieve its budget. Right now, we have ninety-eight thousand, five hundred dollars of expenditures for Island Fest. Every dollar that we use in expenditures for things like services means less fireworks, less rides, less cool stuff, right? So it, but I know it's only eight thousand bucks, but Island Fest budget is only a hundred thousand dollars. So what we're talking about is almost ten percent of the entirety of the Island Fest budget that we're using to pay for services that arguably are, are going to... If, if there's ten thousand people that live in Groseal and seven thousand of them are here at the airport, the police should probably be here, right? Like, you know, there's gonna be DPS issues, you know, so...
Jameson, you're saying vote no then, aren't you?
That's, I'm saying vote no.
So really quick, really quick, I'm gonna point one more thing out and make sure we're all clear on this. Chief Carmack never asked for this line item to be put into his budget. This was required of him. He was told it had to be in there. And none of my feathers are ruffled about it. I'm just pointing this out.
It needs to be put in there.
Well, I agree with, no, you're correct, Margaret. I spoke to Doug about it, and it happened previous. And Doug was told, "You'll do this," and I get it.
Right.
And, and no, it has, this has nothing to do with Doug.
No, not at all. But it needs to be put in there. I mean, I'm sorry, I, I understand, I'm, I'm the opposition at this point with, with, uh, Mr. Jaeger. But the Island Fest is consuming the resources of the police and the DPS. They need to be paid back for it. And I mean, and I'm not, I, I'm, I'm not knocking the Island Fest or anything else. We have to have the function. We have to have this. And I, I think it's good for the island as a whole. But we're spending resources from the police and from the DPS to manage that and to help take care of things. I, I think that the department should be paid back for their expenditures.
Okay, then that would be yes, then. You'd be voting yes.
Yes.
And we also invite people that don't live on the island to come to this event. And that, so tax, our island taxpayers are subsidizing people from the outside to come to this event.
Well, it's not a tax, no, the taxpayers don't pay for any of this. It's done by sponsors. So you're right that we are doing that sponsoring for others. But as Jameson stated, oh, I'm sorry, Jameson, my mic was off. As Jameson stated, yeah, that there's no tax dollars being used for, to put on Island Fest. But you are correct, tax dollars, because of the police, the fire, you could, in DPS, you could say that. I mean, there is a part of that, Kevin, so you make a point.
So Joe, we heard from rec and we heard, um, from Doug, right? On behalf of the police, is DPS okay with it? Just curious, you're the third party?
With what aspect? The reimbursement?
If it got pulled out, if the reimbursement was gone?
We would make it work within our budget. It's more of a policy decision as to whether you feel that the Island Fest should reimburse the departments for costs incurred.
Yeah.
I mean, we are, we are public service. We, that's what we do. You know, if that's part of public service, then I can understand that completely, so...
But your budget will be okay?
Our budget would be okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking about, we're talking about peanut for the DPS budget and the police budget, right? And we're talking about almost ten percent of the Island Fest budget.
And we're just trying to, to make things go out here for the people. We're trying to put something else out for them. It's like any other service we provide. So anyway, are we good with that? Everybody ready to vote? For, this is action item number five? Okay, remember, if you want it to stay the same...
Yes, right?
If you want, if you want Island Fest to reimburse police and DPS, vote yes.
Yes, if you...
If you don't, vote no.
Okay. I want to make sure we're clear on that. Thank you, Jameson, for your explanation again. Okay. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, all opposed? No. Wait.
I just noticed, say no.
Can we do a roll call, please? Just do a roll call.
I didn't get...
Please, can we, can we please just do a roll call?
What happened? A couple of them left.
I think I have three people talked there.
Yeah, we, only three of us voted.
Let's vote again.
We do a roll call.
Roll call, please.
Okay. You want to start with you, Bill?
Let's go this side, Bill.
Do, do I want to start? This is not my vote.
Bill, go ahead, your vote first.
Yes, I want to start. Yes.
Uh, no, I think.
No.
Joe, no.
I'm voting to keep it the same.
That's a yes.
That's a yes, yeah. Yes, yay.
Margaret, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. You're right. Did she leave?
No, I mean, I'm still here.
Okay. I'm sorry?
No. Pains me to say no.
Okay, so, no, four noes, are we correct or no?
Four noes, correct. Four to three did not pass.
Okay. Everybody, thank you tonight. Um, we had some...
We need a motion to adjourn, sir.
Oh, no, hold on, I still got public comments.
I'm sorry.
We still got public comment in case there are any. But I'm just thanking you all. I, I want to thank all, let me get my thanks out first before we get to... You can do anything you want because I'm leaving right now. Go ahead.
So I just wanted, is it okay to summarize the results?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Okay. We are keeping in the current budget that was presented, the two-and-a-half percent cost of living increases for the full-time, non-union employees. With the exception of the airport manager, that increase will be five thousand dollars inclusive of the two-and-a-half percent. And the DPA, I'm sorry, the DDA director and community development director, the same. A total of a five thousand dollar increase inclusive of the two-and-a-half percent. The, and as well, the confidential secretary of the police department, a five thousand dollar total increase. We are keeping the placeholders in the fire department budget for salaries for the fire chief and the fire marshal. And we are removing from the Island Fest budget the reimbursement to the police department and DPW and removing that income from those respective departments.
Correct. You did that a lot better than I could have, so...
And these are just relative to the budget. They're not approvals, but they're...
No, they're not approvals, correct.
So, so what will happen on the twenty-four? I'll make all these changes. In your board packets, you'll have the updated budgets for that action item on the twenty-fourth. I will have to list out the, the changes from what was presented during the public hearing to what you are voting on, on the twenty-fourth. And I will, I will itemize those in the action item.
Thank you very much. Kevin?
Uh, would you, uh... Finest Director, would you please talk about how we, when we vote for the budget, we can, are we able to, uh, make amendments to the budget on the twenty-fourth?
No, you are not. I, I don't believe you are because I've given a public hearing on the budget. And I have to present a budget, a complete budget to the board. And so I can recognize what we've, what we've discussed tonight and the decisions that have been made so that I can still prepare a complete budget book for the board to approve.
So we approve or not approve?
Yeah.
Right. But a budget does have to be adopted before March thirty-first.
I, I think we could, technically speaking. But it would kick Teresa back to the drawing board and we would have to do...
Have another public meeting.
Yeah, we would have to have another.
With Kevin, what, with Kevin is stating, though, say we go two months down the line and we, Kevin, whoever brings up something about a change, we always can amend the budget during the year. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, that's, I want to make sure we're clear on that.
Thank you.
All right, sir? Okay, with all the people in the audience, thank you for, uh, sticking with us. Is there, I gotta see on the podium. Oh, okay, is there anybody that would like to make any type of comment? Okay, sir.
Unless I get twenty minutes.
No, you get, you get two and a half.
Sounds good.
I'll sweep my time to the gentleman.
So we are doing a study session next week.
Thank you, phone.
Microphone, sir.
Sorry. Scott Longton, two-nine-zero-three-nine, East River. Uh, I am your Groseal Police Commission Chairperson. We are doing a study session with the police department next week here, um, Tuesday at six o'clock before our normal meeting. I would ask that the board attend so that you guys have a full understanding of what's really going on with the department, more than just what the liaison is able to briefly bring to the regular meetings. Um, there's a lot going on, uh, to the extent of staffing issues, budget issues, as you guys well are aware, um, equipment issues, things of that nature. Um, things that you don't know, just to highlight, we have, um, dealt with expired body armor for our officers, expired equipment, things of that nature. Those are things that never should be occurring in our department. Um, those are the things that we're battling. Um, the time off with officers. Our chief, uh, uh, Mr. Porzarelli asked how many hours our chief and deputy chief are putting on the road. Um, there have been times that our chief has come in, uh, most recently to do midnight shifts from midnight to four AM or four AM to eight PM, I'm sorry, eight AM, and then hit his regular schedule in the department. Um, if you guys drive past Meridian School, you'll know he is the crosswalker, uh, doing crosswalk, uh, in the mornings. He, that is not part of his job description. Uh, that is not time that he's paid for. That is, he keeps, keeping track of my two and a half.
No, I'm, keep going.
So these are things that we are doing within the department. One, do keep, um, you know, costs down within the community, not only for the school, for crosswalk. But those are times that the, our officers or our chief are, that he's putting in on his own time and not getting paid for. With that said, there were a number of comments up here that draw concern for me. Um, I'll be reaching out to a number of the trustees with comments or statements that were made. Uh, I, I implore some of you to be cautious of your words because you are borderline breaching fiduciary duties to the township. Be cautious. What your words say up here mean more than just the normal guy sitting at the bar says. So you guys and ladies need to be very conscientious of these statements in your vocabulary when you're sitting here because, uh, there are a number of things that I heard today that are concerning. With that said, thank you for your time. I thank everybody for their time today. I know you guys made some hard decisions. Uh, this is not easy under any circumstances. I'm not in your shoes. I just sit in the back and make recommendations. So thank you for the hard decisions that you guys have to make.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Hey, Scott, would you make sure?
Uh, Tuesday next week, Brian, we have that poster for the, um.
That's your regular third Tuesday, isn't it, Scott?
Regular third Tuesday, but we're doing a study session at 6:00 p.m. before the regular, in here.
I want to make sure in here.
Yep, so 6:00 p.m. Next week, Tuesday.
Thank you.
Will the study session be broadcast as well as the regular meeting?
It will not. We don't have, um, the, um, they don't broadcast those for whatever reason.
Can we, can we get that, Brian?
I was told by the department that it was not going to be broadcast. I ask every meeting if they have a special.
It is up, by policy, it is up to the group.
Correct.
That is having it for a study session. So the group stated no. By policy, they can have that. So, I mean, you can ask them whatever you want.
If you could, that'd be great.
We tend to do a lot more work when we don't have the cameras going, um, but we can, we can take that under advisement and we can talk about it.
It's, I'll bring it up to the chief, talk about it, and, um, if not, it, it's, being off television, not that it means anything. It's just, we actually, the people that come in from the township as public, they kind of just kind of chime in from the gallery. Fire at us with some questions every now and then that, not that they're doing public comment, but we can address it.
Well, you still can in a study session, right?
Right.
You don't have, it's your meeting.
Yeah, you're allowed to, whoever you want to talk can talk.
It would be, it would be nice if it were broadcast, sure.
If, if the board members are at the meeting, does that become a, an issue?
No, you can have as many, at that meeting, we're there for informational purposes.
It's my understanding, it's not a quorum. We've always had board members at past.
We could have all seven come and listen to you.
Yeah.
It's information.
Right.
It's no different than being at a training together.
Yeah, it's only, rises to the level of Open Meetings Act violation if we start debating or making decisions.
Yeah, so.
Doing the business of the township.
Well, I'd, I'd like to say thank you for taking on the major role of chairman of the, uh, police commission.
We've got a lot to do this year.
There is a lot of, lot to do, and, uh.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would, one, I, because of the, how important and how large the budget, and it's the largest, I believe, largest budget in the township, the police department.
Uh, DPS.
DPS, okay. I, I would highly. Uh, or I would like to recommend that a open, or of, uh, the meeting should, uh, have it broadcast. I know it's a, a challenge, but I think it's important to the community because of, there are so many issues here.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay. Need a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Need a second? On favor, aye. Opposed? Thank you.